Yeah, that's the AI.
Hey, we are on, everyone.
Yeah, it's good.
So I would like to, we're going to start now and open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board February 28th, 2018 meeting, Memorial Town Hall, on the third floor in the conference room. It's five after seven. Thank you. So we have minutes, no vouchers, no correspondence, two public hearings, 66 Parish Road, 34 East Main Street, the 40B Housing Development Project. Then we have planning with the review of East Main Street Recreation Park. And then the last item is any member of Public Concerns, review of zoning amendment is one of those. So with that, going to the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If you will hear the motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 14, 2018 minutes as we may amend.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of February 14, 2018. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. A woman, 32, just King Year resident.
Thirty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, they grandfather due to the RV. She's got a D in Tennessee.
Nope.
She's in line 91 on the second page, Chapter 165-7.
I'm sorry, could you say that again to us?
It's instead of 161, it's Chapter 165-7.
No.
Definition in the zoning.
Chapter, speaking of Chapter 161, it is wetlands protection.
Did you want to put that in, or?
That's actually what we have right now.
Oh.
It is 161, I believe, because that is a local bylaw that enables and powers the local conservation commission.
And you, being such an expert from the Conservation Commission history?
Yeah.
Would know such a thing. Thank you. So I think we'll leave it at 161?
Yeah, sure.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one abstain, Matt abstain. Okay. Public hearing, what time is that?
They were advertised for seven.
For seven? Oh, great. Fantastic. Wahoo. We have no vouchers, no correspondence. We're going to go to the first public hearing, which is 34 East Main Street, 40B.
I thought it was 66. We got a, we got a one-on-one.
Oh, what, is it a different?
I think it was.
Yeah, I did hand out the amended.
I'm sorry. Okay, amended.
Yep.
Scratch that. We're going to go to 66 Parish Road, OSRD special permit.
I'd just like to add, before we start, did everybody see the letter that was drafted? Oh, excuse me, that's for the other one, never mind. Now you get me mixed up. But for this particular one, though, there is a handout for certain amendments that were advised by the applicant's town council, and I'll give you those.
By the applicant's council or town council?
No, the applicant's council, by applicant's council. We're lucky enough to get some legal advice free for this particular.
Thank you, sir.
And it's just minor.
This is for this part?
For the OSRD?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And I'll just go over those real quick where Nancy wants to, that's fine.
So what we'll do, John, is we'll first open, or reopen, I guess, the public hearing, and then we'll go to you, John, for a summary, and then we'll go to the applicant.
Yep.
Okay. So can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to reopen the, open the continuation of the public hearing for 66 Parish Road, OSRD concept.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded to reopen the public hearing for 66 Parish Road, OSRD special permit. Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, John, do you want to give us an overview first?
Can I have that copy back from what I gave you? Just give myself one. Okay. Just some minor changes, and they're found on the handout I just gave you on page five. And those are conditions of approval, numbers two through six. Seven and eight were already in the original.
Could you say it again, please?
On page five of the handout decision, at the top of the page, beginning on number two.
Mm-hmm.
And these are conditions two through six, that are specifications of approval that the board agreed to at the last meeting. There's no new language or any surprises there, it's just that it's a more concise document, more correct document than the one I produced earlier.
Okay, so we can ask questions about that if we want, but with that, do you want to start?
Sure, thank you very much. This is our third meeting with you. At the last meeting, we presented a revised concept plan that came to be after our initial meeting with you in December. And we incorporated the comments and responses to comments that we heard from you at that meeting into the plan. And we also, through our project engineer, Philip Christensen, and his very extensive work with the conservation agent, came up with some revisions to the plan that the Conservation Commission was very pleased with, and you had a memo to that effect from the Conservation Agent, and we presented that to you at the last meeting. And basically, the changes amounted to increasing the amount of open space from 30 acres to 30, no, a little over 33 acres, adding some curvature to the road to make that a little more attractive, enhancement of the wetland area that is running along the frontage of the lot on Parish Road, and quite importantly, having the open space being deeded to the Conservation Commission, and having an area for parking and trail access and trail improvement. So we reviewed all of that with you at the last meeting, and spent a lot of time, and it got late, and it was Valentine's Day. So we moved along to tonight, and we don't have anything new to present to you. We presented everything at the last meeting, and I think we are at a point where we're ready to hopefully move forward on the concept plan so that we can then undertake the engineered plan for the site plan approval.
So before we go to the planning board, is there anyone in the public that just wanted to ask any questions, say anything? So seeing that, Matt, you were able to catch up to speed and do that deal?
Yeah, watched the event, and I don't have any further questions.
Okay. So I guess bringing it to the board, I know you had some questions, Tilly.
And they didn't come in with anything from the fire department?
We did. We met with, I met with the fire chief.
Okay.
Mitchell, I believe, right. And we discussed the turnaround and fire protection in terms of water supply, also in the availability of Georgetown to get to a fire there. One of his comments was that, in fact, if there's a fire, the first call would go out, probably the Newbury Fire Station, which is far closer than the Georgetown Fire Station. And he wanted us to look into connecting either to the Newbury Water Supply or the Georgetown Water Supply and extending it to the site. So we did, and we talked to the Newbury Water Department, and they said we could connect to their line if they wanted. And we looked, we had Georgetown Supply Ends, which is the other side of the bridge that we're going to fix. And we've decided to bring a water line in from Georgetown, running along Larkin Road and into the project site, and then we'd have, we wouldn't need wells on the site, which we originally proposed. We'd have town water, and we'd have hydrants for fire protection. So that was as a direct result of the conversations with the fire chief. With respect to the cul-de-sac turnaround area, we did discuss the turnaround area that it meets planning board standards as designed, and he wants us to look into the possibility of a full cul-de-sac as we move along, and he'll make some decisions on that. But he didn't negate this, but he'd like us to look at both.
I don't know. Anything else, Tony?
Yes. As I recall, there was a discussion of defining what a special permit is. And a special permit is by all means a use, but when there are specific listings of what is in that use, it's a bylaw, it's voted at town meeting. We cannot deviate from that. We can add to it with our conditions, but we've got to follow that. That's part of the bylaw. And through that, it's listed very specifically in D or E in one of the listings, that you may have a common drive with a maximum of three homes in the OSRD. I communicated with the building inspector to be sure I understood clearly, and asked him if there was any other provisions in our zoning, and he submitted just what I'm telling you in the memo, so there is no way.
Do we have that memo?
Sure, I have it. There's, in order to approve this, it probably has to go to the zoning board to approve our by, to put a variance on our bylaw in that specific area.
So my, I guess what comes up to me, my response to that is that what we're doing right now tonight, what the objective is, is to grant or not grant a special permit for the OSRD concept. The, basically the idea.
Yeah.
John, jump in if I'm misstating. And after that, assuming it's approved, then we go to the site plan portion of the approval, which the fire chief issues will get worked out, all the details will get worked out. Excuse me. And it's at that level where we have our last shot at all of this material. So right now, what we're doing is just the idea, and I think that's, I think that's separate from what you're talking about. I'm trying to piece the dots together on those two, and I'm having a hard time doing it.
The document that, this document, I recall it specifically, it says shared by not more than three lots, but this project has been presented as a single lot.
That's true.
And so I don't know if this issue of three lots is relevant.
It's not three lots that I'm questioning, it's the, it's the common drive.
It's common drive for three lots.
For access.
For three lots.
But, no, it's 10.
No, it's one. That's what they're, that's the position that they took, and I think that we need an opinion as to, is it a lot? Is it 10 lots? What?
There's no lot, as she explained, it's only one parcel.
Right.
And that includes the open space and everything, that's all one.
No, it's not. It's two parcels, it's the.
So there's two lots?
No. There is one lot and one parcel.
It's a twisting of the words.
No, 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 no. It is not a twisting of the words. A lot is defined as a buildable parcel, and a parcel is not a buildable lot.
Yeah.
They're two, they're two very different things. A lot is a buildable lot, and a parcel is a non-buildable lot. The area in the back is not, is proposed as a non-buildable lot.
But once you put a line between that big parcel, you have two lots, whether you want to call it whatever, there is going to be two lots there. And once you do that, that is a subdivision. So there's many questions about it, as you're pointing out, Bob.
Well, I think what Bob was saying was that he was clarifying, which I tend to agree with, which is what he was saying is that, you know, this is not a common drive, it's one lot, and so this section that you're talking about doesn't apply to what we're doing right now. And I tend to agree with that.
How so? You are.
Because he's not. This is, this is one lot. So the equivalent would be if you had a landowner that wanted to build several outbuildings on his property. So if he wanted to have a house in the front, and a barn, and a shop, and et cetera, in the back, we couldn't say to him, you can't have your driveway go up to the back lots, the back buildings. It's the same thing. This is a single lot. You're building 10 buildings on one lot. So it's not a common drive, it's not anything else, it's one lot. So none of this applies.
No, that's, that's not.
Another way to look at this, say it was a half a million square foot building, you know, multi-story, we wouldn't have them be building a roadway, a public roadway to service the needs of that building and all of the tenants of that building. It would be a driveway leading into it. It's the same thing here, and it all comes down to life safety. If the fire chief is satisfied with the design of the roadway ultimately, and that would be decided now with the site plan, then that's what we're dealing with. This isn't a common driveway. And if you really look into the common driveway provision, that also is about life safety. We only would allow for something like that for up to three lots, three dwelling lots, if it provided for life safety needs in accordance with what the fire department would recommend to the planning board. You know, in this particular case, it's 10 houses, condominium-style houses on a private drive, and it's all about life safety, it's not about anything else. It's not about building a roadway as a public road. It's about building a roadway that meets public safety requirements.
Harry, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking that Tilly has a point with respect to, with respect to common driveway, but I think it's, it's being applied incorrectly the way you're thinking it. That would be three individual buildable lots, each which had frontage in and of themselves. This is a single condominium lot.
If you read.
And I think even though it's really tough to, kind of, for the board might be in all trouble wrapping up minds around it within the concept of an OSRD, it is clearly in the OSRD. It was one of the intents of the OSRD, to be able to have the flexibility for this board and the applicants to be able to build in this way. So I respectfully have to disagree with you, David, I'm sorry.
Well, according to, let me read it in your by, in her bylaw. Common shared driveways. A common or shared driveway may serve a maximum number of three dwelling units, period. Each one of those houses is a dwelling unit.
It's not a common driveway.
Well, okay, but I think we ought to have that confirmed.
Another point that really has to be understood, many months ago now, Les Garden, in his official capacity, rendered a zoning determination that provided for this concept plan to be applied for with this board. And the issue of the condominium was decided within that zoning determination. He hasn't rendered anything different from what his determination was, his original. That determination legally can be appealed within 30 days, and it wasn't. It's in effect, that's the law.
I'm really glad you're reminding us of that, because I know for myself, I forgot that. That's just one more.
That zoning determination is concrete as a statute, especially when it comes to this specific project.
What I'd like, what I'd like to do is, there are four board members here that are leaning one way, and Tilly, you're, you know, you have concerns about this, and you know, if you want a couple more minutes to keep advocating for it, be happy to give you the floor, but.
Last meeting, I tried to go that route, but as you heard, if I didn't hear it once, I heard it about five times from the applicant attorney, that this was a condominium common driveway. So beginning, she, she spelled it like, because it's a condominium, you could do other things than a subdivision. Don't call it a subdivision, she repeatedly told me. So anyway, I really think this ought to be cleared up right now at the beginning. My also, my concern when you mentioned the building inspector making the decision, honestly, Rob, I thought that the first thing should have been our yield. I thought that was number one. We want to see how many, how many houses can be built based on that yield. But when the subdivision came in, the paperwork that I got, to determine the yield for a regular subdivision of eight, eight houses, there's a waiver there. And that's not in our bylaw, it's just a subdivision. Do we want to consider, when we calculate yield, that waivers are a part of it, and it's okay automatically without, you know? And that's, that was another thing that I questioned. I thought, first, we got to find out how many they can build. And that should have been the yield. But they have, here's the waivers, you know? And I questioned that right off, and I said, this just doesn't seem right. And sure enough, with the subdivision, they put three houses on it. You know, they made two driveways for the subdivision. So I questioned that. And in fact, if you look through the step, I asked, I asked our building inspector, which do you count for frontage? Because the frontage is on Larkin. But I always thought frontage meant that the front door was facing the frontage. But they can't, they're counting this as the frontage, yet the driveway is the accessway. So I thought right there, gee, that's, that's different. And basically, didn't know whether it was right or wrong. So I sent him that, and I got that answer.
Tilly, wasn't that a subdivision plan, though?
That's right.
That's a, that's a completely different.
But that's how he determined yield. And here, all he did here was give you the dimensions of these lots that he had, eight lots. So I'm not even comfortable with this, saying that it's.
So that, so, okay, so that's now going back another step where we're doing a while ago, and I thought we had moved past that.
So I got many questions about it. And basically, I like OSRDs. I think they're the greatest thing for the town, but the way this is set up, and the way this is set up, doesn't jive. And this is what we have to follow.
Okay.
And that's all I want to say.
Well, so it is clearly noted.
Okay.
Thank you for that, and I tell you, I appreciate your courage to stand on what you think about that. I really do.
Thank you.
So with that.
I just had one other quick thing. At the last meeting, there was quite a discussion about sidewalks. I know this doesn't have to be resolved at this stage.
Correct.
But just for whatever it's worth, I agree with that discussion that this would be a property that sidewalks would be appropriate.
Okay.
What about the emergency access?
All right, stop, stop.
Well, I'm just curious, seriously, as a question, if I may, the emergency, was that discussed at all with the fire chief? Did that enter into the discussion?
That wasn't, he was just concerned with the roadway width, he prefers 24. He would go down to 20, but he prefers 24, which is what we proposed.
So you might end up with 22.
We might.
Or 20.
Hands on the sidewalk, you know?
20 in the sidewalk.
Yeah, we can, we can.
All good stuff. So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If you'll hear it. Here we go, John, you really got to cut these down.
Yeah, we got to, we definitely.
If you want to abridge it before you start reading it, that's fine with me.
You know what? I've just got a blast.
Just grab the beginning of it.
Motion to approve the OSRD special concept permit plan application for 66 Parish Road, map 20, lot 1, Georgetown, Mass., with the conditions set forth in the attached notice of decision.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the OSRD concept special permit plan application for 66 Parish Road, map 20, lot 1, Georgetown, Mass., with conditions set forth in the attached notice of decision. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Four yes, one no.
Thank you very much.
With that.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 66 Parish Road concept plan.
Second.
OSRD.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the OSRD concept special plan permit hearing for 66 Parish Road. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll be back for the site plan.
Okay, so.
You want to send?
I'll send you electronic copy.
Great, thank you very much.
So we're now going.
Oh, there was something. It's a special permit. Special permits have to be three years now, right?
Yes, they are.
Did that say three or two?
Two.
That's it, two. No, they changed that, it's got to be three.
It's three now.
All right, so I'll change that in the actual decision.
Yeah, mention that.
Yeah. We take a break, I'll just change that page.
The way my brain works.
Good catch.
The way my brain works.
I wouldn't even listen to it. Three, two.
He's amazing.
Okay.
Amazing the stuff that pours through the calendar, huh?
So we're now going to move to the next public hearing, which is 34 East Main Street, the 40B Housing Development, this unit, local initiative program. We're looking for a motion.
Is it a public hearing? Or is this just a public meeting?
It's just a public meeting.
It's not a public hearing?
It's business, right?
Never mind.
If anybody from the public would like to speak on it, they're here this evening, you know, it would be prudent to hear from them, absolutely. But it's not a public hearing in a formal sense.
So for future, would that then go under planning office?
It could go in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, I'd like to open the public meeting on the 66, 34 East Main Street, and we'll first go to John for an overview, and then we'll go to the applicant for their presentation, public if there are any questions or comments or concerns, and then back to the planning board.
Just real quick, this is, obviously, it's a lip-friendly 40B, so-called, and we do have for this evening Larry Graham, our technical review agent, we have his peer review. Mr. Graham got caught up in an emergency family matter in Kentucky. He won't be in town until Thursday, tomorrow. So we don't have him here tonight to go over his peer review. So we're left on our own, and if the board, I'm just saying if, the board does move after the presentation, after all the questions, the board does move to take action, there is an appropriate draft motion that also includes the letter I made reference to in the last item, and that was attachment B. I don't know if everybody saw that?
I did.
Okay. And it's pretty similar to what action the board took in the previous submission, and basically taking into consideration the lengthiness of Mr. Graham's peer review and the issues he brought up of concern, that he would like to see addressed in revised plans sometime in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So with that, to the applicant.
Good evening. Back before you guys, a year later. You know, oh, Sean and Jamal for 34 East Main Street. Is it like, oh, yeah? Okay. I, you know, first, I kind of just want to remind everyone why we're here a little bit. We're here, we already went to the ZBA, and we're here looking for a recommendation, not an approval, we're just looking for a recommendation for the ZBA. We are renovating an existing dilapidated historic building in downtown Georgetown, and it's going to provide housing in an area of town in dire need of housing, and it's going to help sustain the vibrancy of downtown. Again, it's eight units, six one-bedroom units, and two two-bedroom units. And, you know, those, the one-bedroom units are number one in demand, and the two-bedroom units are the number two in demand in Georgetown. I reviewed the Georgetown housing production plan. and Georgetown is at 11.61% affordable. And they predict that in 2020, you're going to be under the 10% threshold. And where 40Bs, you know, you're not going to have as much say, per se, in what goes in once you're under that 10% threshold. And the housing production plan stated that there are constraints in development due to the lack of public transportation and that there's a grave need for development in downtown. And that the town's housing stock continues to lack diversity because it largely consists of single-family homes. In fact, only 0.9% of the housing stock is in four-to-eight unit buildings. And out of 216 affordable units in Georgetown, only six are for ownership that are not for seniors. And 34 East Main Street has been on the list of possibilities for affordable housing since 2011. So this building is, you know, definitely fits for the affordable housing. It definitely fits the dire need of housing downtown. It, you know, it hits on all the issues in the housing production plan. The one-bedrooms, the two-bedrooms, the, you know, keeping the town vibrant. There's, you know, this sore spot in town that we're trying to renovate, and it'll stay, you know, in good condition if we make it into condos. You know, it's not going to go down. And, you know, that's why we're proposing this project. And, you know, the problem with renovating a historic existing building is there's limitations in what you can do with an existing building and with the existing plot plan. And our goal is to keep the building's outside shell the same so that it's as if it has always been downtown. You know, it fits in with the character downtown. And so that precludes us from doing certain things. And, you know, that's why we're here and we're looking for the recommendation from you guys. And we've had a chance to review some of Larry Graham's comments. And we'd like to discuss them with you and go over them with you and, you know, what is feasible, what is not feasible. And, you know, remember that it's eight units. And we're talking realistically 10 people. It's not a huge building. It's a small building that's going to look like a single family and look like it's always been there and give people the opportunity, you know, single people to live in downtown Georgetown. So with that, I don't know if you want to talk about any of it.
Right, I can take you through the site plan in general. My name's Rich Williams with Williams &amp; Sprages. I don't know many of you have seen this already. So the existing structure, or structures, are shown on the plan. The existing house, I believe, was, this was the original house. And then there was an addition to the back. This was the original barn, and then this was added on. This part of the original barn is, if you look at it, it's in severe disrepair and falling off. So the proposal is to keep the main box shell. There's some changes to the back piece. That's being completely renovated. Provide a connection to this back barn building, which also will contain units, while maintaining a vehicle access around this building via a tunnel between the two, I call it a tunnel, but an arched accessway between those two buildings. So the traffic pattern, as we have it laid out, is a one-way around this building and then two-way traffic back to, I'll call it the main parking field, which provides the majority of the parking. The other parking is provided in these three spaces up towards the front of the building. We've designed drainage system for all of the impervious area. We've got several infiltration areas and treatment areas. We've got a drainage infiltration area on the front that's collected in a catch basin here. An area on the front right side that's collected with a catch basin in this location. And then the main back parking area is collected and treated in another subsurface system. We've designed a septic system that is located generally here. And that septic system would replace the existing septic system, which is a failed cesspool. And in order to do that and meet state Title V regulations, that area's got to be picked up. So in order to do that, pick up the parking, there would be a retaining wall that supports that parking that basically goes around the three sides of the system, the left side, the back, and then the back right. And that would also support some of the work for the drainage system back here. And I will point out that we have not got a permit from the Board of Health. We are working with them. When we filed this permit, we were asked for a waiver from the local regulations, because it was a 40B. From the local regulations, they have an increased flow requirement in town for each bedroom. We asked for a waiver on that, and we're still working through that. If we don't get it, we'll have to redesign the system, which I'm not sure where it's going to land. But we think we're going to be able to work it out. We've got lighting, landscaping, and I'm sure we're going to go through all those in detail. I'm not, I don't think it makes sense for me to go through every aspect of those at this point. It's probably going to make sense to go through Larry's letter and see where he doesn't agree with what we've done. But again, we've designed lighting, landscaping. James Emanuel is with us tonight, he's the landscape architect. After I get ridiculed for my landscaping. James is on board.
He came back.
Glad to see you, Jim.
And I think it probably makes sense to go through Larry's letter at this point, unless you have other general things you'd like me to go through.
I think that makes sense. Before we do that, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to say anything in public? Okay.
That's Joe White with Williams &amp; Sprages. He's here to keep me in line.
So we can, is the board, that makes sense to go through Larry's letter?
It does. I just had one quick question because of something that I've just heard for the first time. You're going to be, if I may, you mentioned that the historic facade is going to be maintained. Is there going to be a historic restriction on this?
No.
There isn't?
No.
Okay, so you're not actually restricted to do that?
No.
Okay, so you don't have to preserve the buildings?
No, we want to preserve the historic building because it's been there since 1810.
You want to, but not so much that you put a historic restriction on it?
Correct. It's not listed under the historical site, but it is a historic building by the Historic Commission because I met and discussed it.
I believed it.
With that.
It's not date listed, but anyway.
I think the point, I think what you asked was clarified.
Thank you, thank you very much.
That's, that's. Before we go to the letter, I have one, it's sort of an overview question. It's, you know, when you, oh, I wanted to say this. I hope it's clear that, and I think I'm speaking for the board. Everybody is on board with the idea of affordable housing, the building being preserved, downtown, the project as an idea. Everybody's on board with that. Right now, the job is to make it work at the basic minimum level of health, safety, welfare in order for the board to then recommend to the ZBA to go ahead. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all the same.
Yeah, I think we are. So Larry Graham sort of, you could summarize his letter by the ending where he talked about a redesign.
Right.
And there were a lot of reasons why, and they were significant reasons. How did you, how do you respond to that? I know it's the last thing you want to do.
I know he's not here.
Yeah, and that's a problem.
He talked to me and he said he took the whole letter back, that we're all set.
That was pretty good.
Good tonight, earlier, he's on a roll tonight. He said he couldn't make the meeting, something came up. Before he says something, I just want to say one thing. If you look back to the February 1st, 2017 letter that Larry Graham did on reviewing our first set of plans, we had the same driveway issue there. And it wasn't a major issue at that point. It wasn't, he never said we needed to redesign it. He never even, I mean, he mentions it casually in number nine, but that's it. It's not like this big, huge, like, you know, stopper where it seems like it is a year later in his letter, which I was kind of surprised at.
My recollection from the February 2017 letter, I don't have it in front of me, but he was concerned because he didn't have enough information at that point.
That's how I remember it.
To even really truly evaluate the proposal.
That's kind of how I remember it, too.
So I don't think he was getting into.
But I do want to say this, I do want to say this. I appreciate that, and I tend to kind of remember it the way Matt does. But that was then, and we're here today now, and this is where we're at. And this is.
So the big issue, I think, from how do we go forward, is this access around the building.
Tight corner.
And the fact that it's one-way and 12 feet wide, and there's a height limitation for vehicles going through there.
Right.
So my response to that is this. Here are the pros to it. I agree it's tight, okay? I drove a car through there with auto turn, which is a software program that you can drive, you know, any number of vehicles through there. I took a 19-foot vehicle, which is the biggest passenger vehicle and includes pickup trucks and like large SUVs. And I was able to drive it through there. It's very tight. I agree that it's tight, and your wheels have to be very close to this curb not to go over this curb when you make this corner. This turn isn't bad, and this side here is tight. And we have ways that we could alleviate that. We could cut the corner back here and provide a little more room over on that side. So I think we could get by the, can you get a big passenger vehicle through there? What you're not going to get by is, can you get a box truck through there? You're never going to do that. And is it going to be super comfortable to make that corner? No, but those are people that are going to be living there, and they're going to do that every day. So we're saying, if you do it every day, you should be pretty good at it. Again, I think we could find ways to provide a little more space. We could cut this corner back, provide a little more room over here. The alternative to that is to make this two-way and get rid of this. It's really not what we want to do.
So you could make that two-way?
Isn't that one of Larry's suggestions?
I think it was, but he had some others.
If we make it a two-way, we may not be able to make all the parking spaces required. We might need a waiver.
So what about Larry's comment, which was also about the building in the back?
So now you're changing the building.
Yeah, we.
We're not going to demolish the building and move the building. Now you're changing the footprint, you're changing the whole.
So you're saying, no, you don't want to do that?
I don't want to do that. I'd rather find another way. I'm trying to keep the existing building. We are trying to keep the existing building.
For what it's worth, the existing building, you really don't experience from the public way. So whoever you're saving it for would be just the residents, which is fine.
Well, you can see this part of it from the public.
Oh, no, I know, but it's really tight to see it. I know, I know it well.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I think what we're going to need to do then is we're going to need to go through each one. If you're not, I was trying to get a big stroke, and if you guys said, yeah, we would entertain that, then that's going to take care of a lot of things.
I don't think we're going to entertain moving this building.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
I think there's other ways to do it.
There are other ways to skin the cat.
So then let's go through the list.
Can I just ask a quick question before we get there, though? With the elevated walkway, what is that for? What is that connecting? Because I assume there's no units that cross the two buildings.
There are not. It was basically Alan thought, you know, I wish Alan was here. He wanted it, he thought it would be nice to do. But, yeah.
And in a perfect world, I don't disagree in any way. But, I mean, a lot of the problems that Larry is having with this have to do with.
So I recall, can we just stop one second? Because I recall at the last meeting, the architect was here, and I'm sorry that he's not here tonight, but there was a code reason that he was connecting these buildings.
I think there was a code reason.
There was definitely a utility connection between these buildings underneath. But I think there was also a code reason on the top for access egress reasons.
So let's go to the letter because there's a lot of items on there, and this is going to take a long time.
And since Larry is not here, we're going to have to do a little.
And we will do the best we can. And if the board is not comfortable responding to some of these without Larry's input, that's fine.
Cool.
That's fine.
And we can also put a response together to this so that there's something in writing that Larry can respond to.
Yep, okay.
That would be good.
So the very first one, which is the vehicular access, right? And so I had, actually, I had at the meeting back in December, I think it was, with the ZBA, I had mentioned about circulation and that it was a problem and to look into it. And then I think I asked about putting on those templates so that you can see them graphically. So not seeing them, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, we can provide it.
That's going to be important. So what about the first issue that comes up, which is height clearance?
So.
Decreasing left and right center. What does that mean to anything? No, I understand that. In terms of vehicles passing, what size vehicle cannot get under that where it gets down to be 10 or whatever? What vehicles are not going to? It's going to be only a truck.
A box truck and above.
What about?
Did you talk about height, nine foot six, 10 foot vehicle height?
I thought it was 10 foot six at the edge.
Is that what it is?
At the edge, it was 10 six. Which, it's not a box truck, but it is a pickup truck, you know, tall pickup truck or SUV. It, I guess, depends on how tall the rack is on the pickup truck.
How big a tires you have.
I think most pickup trucks with racks would fit under it.
That's what I was asking, I was thinking about.
Yeah. So we would need to sign no trucks, period?
That's right.
For all trucks?
Correct.
You almost need one of those things like before the parking garage where if you can't make it under this, you're not going to make it under the next one.
So then the next comment that Larry pointed out was the width of these structures, he says, is not safe for the vehicles or for the protection of the structures or the proposed pedestrian walks.
Yeah, so that comment, I have a note here, that I don't understand it because we have 12 feet. And he, I don't know where he got it, but he's got nine feet in there that there's some structures that decrease the width of that accessway. That accessway is 12 feet clear. Pavement is 12 feet, and then there's a curb. But there are some posts that will come out close to the pavement. So it's 12 feet edge to edge.
Okay.
Now, a highway lane is 12 feet. I'm not saying that there's a lot of room, but it's plenty of room to get a car through there. Most cars are six and a half feet wide, so that leaves three feet on each side. I think that, I hope that he was reading something incorrectly because we don't have anything that indicates nine feet there. It's 12 feet on the pavement, and I scaled the drawing and I scaled 12 feet, so.
Okay.
We will check with the architect and confirm that there's not something that we're missing, but I don't think so.
Okay. Longer standard cars. So then.
If it's a single-car garage, it's seven feet wide for a single-car garage, right?
It depends on the door. I'm saying the door, the garage door that's out there now is like seven feet wide. But.
What's that have to do with anything?
Well, I'm saying, I, I asked what a single-car garage was, because if you, I mean, it's 12 feet. It's as if a car is, I mean, if a car goes into a single-car garage, these people are living here, and it's not, and it's not 100 people.
I think we're going to see that that was a scaling error.
Okay.
Just a boo-boo.
Yeah, so I.
A scaling boo-boo, trying to take it off of the plans.
So then, so then he goes down and he talks about the, the larger cars and the pickup trucks, and so to that, we're going to need to see those templates, and make them sep, would you please make them like separate 11-by-17 exhibits? And, and plot the different vehicles on those, the turning templates, so we can see how tight they really are, like.
Well, I'm just going to put the biggest vehicle on there.
Well, show, make it very clear then, what vehicle is the biggest one that makes it, and then at what point it doesn't make it, and I want to see that one identified also. Because that'll just flag something else.
Yeah.
Okay. Longer standard car. The second item, number two, he's talking about the parallel spaces. Scale 21-foot lengths are not adequate. And he's saying two, and get rid of one. But I don't know what that does for the parking count. How did you, how did you respond to that?
It hurts the parking count, but I, I, his point is that, that these spaces are, normally you're parking, when you, when you park in a parallel spot, you're parking on the right side. These are on the left, so it's, it's somewhat abnormal, but there are, there are places where you park on the left when it's a one-way.
If that turns into a two-way, that's no longer true.
If that's a two-way, there's no parking spaces there.
Those, those no parking spaces there.
Oh, yeah, that would completely eliminate it.
Right, because we don't.
Let's stay focused, let's stay focused on the issue we're talking about.
Right. So there's three spaces here. He's saying he'd like to get rid of one of these spaces and free up some room there. We could do that, or I could make them 22 feet and pull this down. One of his other comments is he wants to get rid of that paver patio area, so I could.
Pick up some space, yeah.
I could pick up some space there and have 22-foot spaces. They don't need to be bigger than 22. 22 is, I think 21 is enough, but 22 is the biggest that they get from a regular.
Yeah, no, 22 is, yeah, no, it is. Okay, so that, that could, those could be increased in size, I think, which is what he's talking about.
Right.
Okay.
It also seemed like he was talking about the awkwardness of that first space. If you were trying to park in that first space going in, you'd have to go, basically go down, turn around, and go back up, I would assume, right?
No, you could pull in here and back in. Well, that's how, every, every parking space that's a parallel space has a car here and a car here, so you have to get into that space, so you have to pull up and back in. Or that's, that's, that's the only way I parallel park, is I go by the space, back up, and go in.
I live in downtown Boston. I had a parallel park on both sides of the street every day.
No, I, I, I don't dispute that. I just, it looks awkward.
It is awkward, and it's because, A, it's proximity to the main street.
Right.
You're just barely coming off when you have to start thinking about parking, but then, B, you're, it's on your left side, and it's, you're in a 15, you're going to have to curl over, you're going to have to line it up, figure it out with your eyes. It's not just you're driving down and a parallel space is on your right. It's a, it's a bit of a challenge.
But the person.
I just want to, I just want to make a general comment about the, about the parking and the layout and all this. These people are going to live here, and it's not like you're going to some foreign place. You're going to have your parking spot, and you'll be able to figure out how to get into it, and you're going to do it every day. So it's, it's, it's not, when I look at it, I, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about it. And the other thing is, this is not a huge traffic generator. It's not like there's going to be cars buzzing in and out of here. It's, it's the equivalent traffic of two to three homes. So.
Two to, two to three single-family houses.
So getting, so getting back to those parallel spaces, you can make them larger.
I can make them larger.
Okay. And I just want to go back to number one, to an item that was missed, and it was in this paragraph, and it's, Larry says, "The point." It's on page, are these numbered?
Yeah.
No.
So it's on, it's, it's the second page. It's number one, but you turn the page to the second paragraph down. It's the very last sentence in that paragraph where it says, "The point to be made here is that there is the potential for conflicts between drivers focusing on maneuvering through the now tightly curved drive with pedestrians in adjacent walk." I think there's some truth to that. I think there's some truth to that. It's, it's a tricky little thing.
No, but that's, again, that's the case with, with everyone up and down the street. These people are parking here, and they, they have to deal with pedestrians and other people. It's not an unusual situation. We're not going to have, it's not like Dunkin' Donuts, where you, you have a person going in and out every, every 30 seconds. You're going to have a person going in and out of their unit, maybe every 10 minutes.
Understood.
Tops, and.
I know people, I know people, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I know people will get used to it, and people will adapt. But then there's good design, and I'm not saying this is bad design, but you know, there, there's a way to do it well, and then there's a way where it's really pushing it, and I, I think.
And I, and I get that. I don't, I, I don't think we're pushing it. I, I, these pedestrians that are here and here are not, they're not in danger. There's, there's protection on either side of them.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
And you're going to look, it's like when you back up out of your driveway, do you check to make sure your children aren't behind you?
No, no, I understand.
I mean, it's kind of the same thing. I haven't hit my children yet.
Is that something that can be reduced with ballards?
Well, you have curbing, right?
But we've got, we've got a structure there that is good as a ballard. We're going to provide protection around that structure so that it doesn't get damaged.
Okay.
But it's like a ballard.
Okay.
The other thing that I'm wondering is, no one in the main building would go out, go take a left, and then walk up and to the parking lot that way, correct? They'd go out and go to the right, I would presume, right?
Yep.
So it's not like there's going to be any pedestrian traffic that, going that direction to speak of.
No, it's only, it's, it's people coming.
You wouldn't come out here and then walk all the way around.
No, no, no. These people aren't going there.
Right.
If, if you're leaving, you're going out this way.
Right.
To your parking spot.
So it doesn't strike me that there'd be a lot of pedestrian.
And these people are either leaving here, going out to this spot, or coming out here. And again, there's protection, there's protection here. So I, I don't see it as, as dangerous.
I figured it out. The pedestrians, it's, the pedestrians will walk, because it's so close to downtown. They are going to be walking.
But they won't be walking at their.
They're not going to be walking in the middle of the property.
Side of the building.
On the side. Well, we're, we're, they're not all coming out the front door, right, facing East Main.
They're not all coming out of that door, right?
Well, he just did it. Do it again, Rich, show more people.
I don't know, where, where do you think these people are walking? Because I want to take you through that route.
Well, I, as far as the access to downtown, they're, they're not always going to take their car to go downtown.
Okay, if they're going downtown, they're walking out the front door and going down the sidewalk.
So everybody will have access right to the front door?
Yes.
Not around the back or anything else? No other door?
This, this is all connected.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I might be able to help out a little bit. Can I, yeah?
Thank you.
This is just trying to think outside the box, because just trying to make this maneuver, people parking back here, I just don't see that as that easy to do. And it would be a much better layout for parking and maneuvering within the parking lot itself, making this a two-way. But you need to provide for your parking. You could keep this tunnel here, and that could be a pedestrian corridor, but you could possibly create a couple of parking spaces here, and then you could do.
There's, there's not enough room to do that. We, we can go, we, we have some other ideas. That if, if we're going to two-way, we have some other solutions. If you put two parking spaces here, you don't, you don't have the width. Look, Larry's looking for 22 feet, which is this width, okay? So if we, if we put two parking spaces there, we won't, we won't be able to do that.
Rich, can you park on the infiltrators?
Okay, so I think, what I, what I'd like to avoid is, I think what's, I, I appreciate that attempt, but we're starting to try to design it up there, and I think we're never going to get through this list if we don't go through each item one by one. And, and I know this is going to be a pain in the neck, but I think it's the only way we can do it.
I just have a couple more points. And, and I don't know if you want to introduce tandem parking as a possibility. You know, several spaces for tandem parking, if that would work. And then what we have to look at here is the six one-bedroom units. In all likelihood, those will be occupied by one person. The highest demand for housing is the single unit, the single-person household, and that's the highest demand. That's the, the largest growing segment of the population is the single-person household. They're proposing one-bedroom units. In all likelihood, those will be one person. Yes, there will be two here and there. But the two-bedroom units will provide for that type of environment, you, living environment, so you'll have more than one person, but, you know, the single.
So not all the parking spots will necessarily be taken. Either we're requiring, you know, we're doing two, two parking spots per unit. But if you're living downtown and you're a two-person family, the likelihood is you only have one car, because you wouldn't need to be downtown. You know what I mean? So there's such a strong possibility that not all these parking spots are going, I mean, and we're providing that they will be there.
We're doing, we're doing a lot of these, when I say these, a lot of bigger projects that, that are a mix of one, twos, and threes. And the data is that the parking requirement for a mix of one, twos, and threes is basically one and a half per unit.
One point seven, one and a half.
It's basically one and a half. And we're, we don't have any threes, so I would say the most we would, we would expect is one and a half, but.
Okay, so.
It's just additional info.
As far as the, the parallel spaces, you can make those longer. For everybody on the board, the whole issue of this circulation system, I'm hanging my hat on when the graphics come back, and we see how these turning templates are working or don't work, and we can have more discussion about how comfortable this is. So that, that's, that's how that's being addressed right now. Going on to number three, site layout and entry drive causes the loss, we do not believe it, on Street Downtown Parking. That just, if it is, it is. If it isn't, it isn't. You guys got to cover that one.
The selectment?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a 40B application, so it's a comprehensive permit.
Yeah.
That would all be wrapped into that one permit.
That one waiver. So we get a waiver, we, we.
We might, they might ask us to get some correspondence from the Board of Selectment.
That's what I, you're going to have to do what you're going to have to do.
Right, but that's a separate issue.
Yep.
Are we going to do number four?
I'm going to get to it, yeah, just, that was number three. So on number four, the site layout, handicap space is not appropriately located. Your response to that?
I think it is appropriately located.
Is it as near that it can be?
Yeah, well, this is the door. This is the handicap access door.
Yeah.
So that's the closest area to it. And the fact that you have to cross that driveway, I mean, I don't mean to laugh, but if you go to Walgreens, all of the park, all of the handicap parking, I mean, Walmart, or, or Market Basket, I'm sorry. You go to Market Basket, all of the handicap parking is across the aisle. The requirement isn't that you put the handicap spot next to the door. It's the most accessible route to the door, which we've provided. Now, is, is that to say we couldn't move it? No, but I, I disagree with them. That it's not an appropriate spot.
Okay. Harry, was there something in particular about that?
No, I would just, I, I wanted to look at it, just examine that. It looked like it was the closest spot to the door. Am I wrong?
I, I think it is.
He's saying, as, which is unit three? That's what he's pointing to.
It's in the barn.
Well, if it's in the barn, then it's.
It's in the barn, but that's the handicap entrance to the barn, so.
That's the handicap entrance to the barn.
Was there anything else, Harry?
No, I just wanted to, I, I just wondered if you walked through that, to see, you know, how the, how someone would get there.
Okay. Uh, let's see, developing, going down to number five.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm very sorry.
Yeah.
What is Larry saying? He's saying to relocate it where?
Well, he's saying it's not appropriate to relocate.
I'm not seeing where it would be relocated. This relocation of handicap space.
He, he wants to put it back here.
What does he want it?
And there's no entrance back there to the building?
There's not an entrance. You'd have to come out and go over there. This is a, this is a stair. It's a safe landing space with a stair, so.
I've seen enough. Thank you.
Then you're going to eliminate the crosswalk. That's what he's saying. Eliminate that crosswalk and put the space there.
And, and all the plantings?
The last sentence there in that paragraph.
Eliminate all the plantings all across, yeah.
It doesn't exist.
No, I, 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 I'm, I'm comfortable with where that is.
Thank you.
Okay, five, G Mello Truck, as previously mentioned, proposed now tightly curved exit driver. This is also no space in the site available for them to turn around. So there's trash, there's, what else? Dumpster.
Trash.
UPS.
UPS.
Deliveries.
Deliveries.
So how are they all going to do their thing?
What we said was that there would be no deliveries inside the site, that that would all happen from East Main Street.
The way the rest of the, the downtown does it.
So they, they.
They, they park on East Main and deliver their, the package to the door.
And the trash was a big issue, and so we decided to put the smallest dumpster that George Mello offers and do that instead of doing the individual traffic, yeah, garbage bins. We thought it would be much.
Our, what we were leaning towards last time was having individual containers and have residents pull them from the street. And.
Remember that.
We think it would be better to have the dumpster, but we didn't think that they would, that Mello would be willing to go in there, but they said, we'll go in there and pull it out of that location with a two-yarder.
And so how did, what do they do? Drive in, pick it up at the front end, and then back out?
Yeah.
So I have a problem with that.
What if it turns into a two-way? I, I mean, I'm, all kidding aside, I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing this as that exit out onto Main Street, that, that goes away, and you're looking at a two-way, and I'm seeing this as the only way you're really going to make this happen. Or for the logistics of that corner.
Even if it's a two-way, the trash truck is not going to be able to turn around in there.
Right.
They're, they're going to be backing out.
But at least people will be cognizant of the fact that something may be coming out of that door, out of that driveway. Which is a big thing.
It's true, but if you go over here, this parking field, the, the dumpsters at the end of the parking field, they do the very same thing over here. They pull in, grab the trash, back out, because they can't turn around in there.
Yeah, but they're not backing out onto East Main Street.
No, that's true.
Good point.
That's true.
And just because something's broken in one place doesn't mean we have to make it, give it a second of time.
So maybe let's.
There's no perfect solution for trash.
There is no perfect solution. So the other solution is to do individual containers and have people pull them to the street, and we're willing to do that.
But, you know, there was issues with that. We, they don't want the trash, the, the garbage truck stopping outside of 34 East Main and holding up traffic. So we were like, okay, well, we can appease it by doing.
Who said, who said that?
There was, ZBA, I think, mentioned it.
Well, there'll be cars parked in the street, right?
So you're out in the lane. Cars, I mean, yeah, parked in the streets.
Also, do we know what it just, what size was it, was the dumpster?
Two yards.
Two yards.
Do we know that that's big enough for 10 units?
And they said they would be willing to come more than once a week.
More than once a week.
I didn't fully, you know, I reviewed this today, this letter today before the meeting, and so I didn't fully absorb Larry's recommendation to, bear with me, to waving a magic wand, getting rid of the barn and redoing it somewhere else. But he seemed to imply, when I skimmed through it, he seemed to imply that if you did that, you could get that kind of vehicle in there, and it could do its thing and turn around and go back out. But I, I, I'm not sure. Did you read that in his? I, I, I'm not clear on how he was talking about redesigning this. When I saw that.
I read it, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure out exactly what he meant.
Right.
But I looked at it, not knowing that, what the answer was on moving the barn.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a really good solution to having, to moving the barn and having that.
Work.
That work and getting the parking that we need. And getting the parking that we need.
Okay. Well, so for me, right now, that one is, is, is a question mark. We won't solve it right now. I love the other, the other board knows, wanna keep talking about it, but.
To be the chairman.
Okay, uh, let's see, two-way trafficking. Fire chief is obvious, you're gonna need to get a.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to point out, I, I met with the fire chief. And when I left there, I thought we were, we were all set. Because he said, as long as I can, he said, this is like any other driveway. As long as I can pull in, back out, I'm gonna be okay. I know that there are places that I can't turn around. And, um, he said he was gonna write that letter. And then we got the letter, and it said that he's looking for two-way traffic over here, which we, we can't do. There's not, there's not enough room between the property line and the building. I've got to call into him, I'm trying to.
So that's, that's between you. As far as the planning board, the only thing we care about is that we see a letter from him saying, good to go. Six, patio padding, pav, paver patio sitting area and its location.
Well, eliminate it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That makes me sad in a lot of ways, because I know that was Alan's.
Yeah.
Thing from, I, I remember that from two thousand and eleven, when he first talked about this project.
Move it to the other corner.
The detail of.
Move it to the other corner of the lot.
The detail of number seven is straightforward, you just do that, right? That's the dumpster concrete pad?
No.
No? Okay.
Wait, didn't you say?
He's talking about moving the dumpster.
No.
He, he wants to, wants.
No, no, no. At the end of that, he's saying, in any case, wherever the dumpster is located.
Yes, that's no problem.
Concrete pad, fence, locking mechanism, structurally sound, all that stuff. That's just a detail.
Are you gonna have something recycling back there as well? As part of the dumpster? I just, I live in a condo, we had a.
Yeah, you know, that's a good question, because.
Trash, we had a trash and recycling separate facilities.
I don't know if they make a.
They don't make a recycling dumpster.
They do.
They do?
Yes. They do, but that's the smallest dumpster they have. If we have, if we do another one.
Whether it's a dumpster, whatever, I don't care. I just, the resident's gonna have to bring it out, because then we're back to that issue, or. Just needs to be addressed in some way.
There's no way you can fit two dumpsters then?
We can. We could put another dumpster next to it.
All right.
Technically, you probably need three, one for trash, one for paper, one for.
They make, they make a single.
Divided ones.
A combined refuse dumpsters, so any, any. I'm, I'm not sure if Mello done that.
All right, I'll ask.
So you can, you can look into that one. Eight, the, this whole snow removal issue. What's the game plan on that?
Moving the snow.
Yeah, we.
We plan on removing it.
We're gonna plow it to the side where we can on smaller storms, but on bigger storms, it's gonna have to be trucked off. And it'll be part of the condo docks.
So what do you do about the plant material, though, that when you're plowing that stuff? That'll get demoed.
What do you do about what, I'm sorry?
The plant material? If you're plowing it to wherever you can, you know, you have a curb, and you push it off to one edge, and you got plant material with it. So you can do that, but you're gonna have to commit to, I guess, every spring, you're gonna go back in and redoing it.
I just mentioned something on that. A lot of the, a lot of the plant material on the site, especially where you might see it edging the roadway, are things either deciduous or, or grasses, or fast-growing deciduous, or, or grass or sedge, or things of that nature. So in a lot of instances, like flanking the barn, where we have two sections there in those corners, which might receive a heavier snow load, would be like a switchgrass, you know, clusters of switchgrass, which would be gone in the winter. So those could, that can, the idea here is that we double that as a snow stockpile area in the wintertime.
Yeah.
And then in the summertime, it'll emerge.
Yeah. So I mean, it, it's working, but you're gonna, I, I wanted to see how you're gonna address, you know, you have certain plants that are gonna take the snow, but then you're gonna have others that aren't gonna take snow on them. And you're gonna have to commit to that, those plants are there the next spring. So.
We haven't O and M.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe we could address that, like an O and M plan for the, for the landscape.
Either that, or it's in the condo documents, you know, somehow that gets tied in.
Okay. We can add that to the condo docs, that they, you know, have a spring.
Someone follows an O and M plan, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is there, is there any concern at all about how this, well, again, with snow? When, when the snow's being plowed from under the, I'm gonna call it the underpass, the overhead, whatever you wanna call it, out, the only place the snow can go is out to the street.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a very tough.
And that's gonna be a real tight corner.
That's gonna be.
Plow's never gonna touch that, that inside corner.
Can a plow actually make that turn?
Well, a pickup truck.
Yeah, sure, plow can make it, but you're not gonna get that right-in corner.
Well, they, they're gonna have to hire someone to maintain this, and they, they could do it with a skid steer. Oftentimes, when, when you hire a landscape plow company, that's, that's what they do.
What do you call it, a snow blower?
I, I think.
Laborious.
There might be some, some handwork there, but.
I think your concern, though, is where's the snow physically gonna go? So if you start over here.
Absolutely, there's no snow, yeah. You're going out into the street. I don't think Peter Durkey's gonna love that.
Well, no, because if, if there's a major snowstorm, then they're gonna go in this way to get the snow too, right?
On a minor snowstorm, all of this material is herbaceous, first of all. So this will not really be plants in the wintertime. So there's a, albeit small, but there is a strip to take, to take a little bit of plowing to the outside edge of the driveway here.
Isn't that a curb line, though? Isn't there a curb there?
The lot line is here.
No, no, I mean, isn't there, I thought there was vertical granite curb.
Is there a wall, is there a wall there?
There's a wall on the Butters property.
So you're gonna be able to push snow up against the wall, and that's it.
Right, so it's, there's a small strip there. I say that's.
For a small storm, he said.
For a small storm, there will be some space, and I think on a larger storm, you're gonna have to manage the snow.
Then your skid steer.
But it, it. So.
It's like any other, any other driveway access on, on East Main Street. They do a combination of pushing in and pulling out. Some of it ends up out, out on the street line, and some of it ends up inside. Again, we can put in the condo docks. The, how to deal with the, with the, with the snow.
All right, is there gonna be a maintenance person on the place, on the grounds?
No.
No. It's only eight, it's only eight units.
So can we see a draft of that?
Of what?
Of, of how you're gonna do the snow, with the management.
Condo docks, you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna see the whole, just how, what you're gonna insert in the condo docks, but just how are you gonna take care of the plants?
Yeah.
How are you gonna take care of the snow?
I think a lot of your problems go away if you go two-way. And eliminate that. Make a nice place for a patio.
Well, if they're not gonna have a maintenance plan, my thought is that.
We are gonna have a maintenance plan.
They are gonna have.
You're gonna have a maintenance plan. So within that plan, I think you should probably put inches of snow that has to be plowed. It has to be tight.
I thought you said maintenance man. We're not gonna have a maintenance man, we'll have a maintenance plan.
All right, the plan for the contract that you're going to establish for plowing, right? Am I right, or not?
Well, I shake my head no, because it depends. If you get six inches of, of fluffy snow, it's different than six inches of heavy snow.
No, I'm not going by that. I mean, I think you gotta be more specific. Because, you know, when I, when my driveway is long, the guy comes frequently because he doesn't want to wait till it's six inches. So he comes when it's like covered. And maybe it's one, two inches, plows it. He doesn't wait for it, the snow to stop. He doesn't.
He's double charge, he's triple charging you.
Well, I think that this is a condo. This is what you're gonna do, because you don't have space for snow.
So we'll, so you'll provide us with a draft of, of how you're gonna take care of that? And then we can, we can respond to that then.
Yeah, I have a plowing contract, and it's by inches.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It has to be minimum, I would say, two inches.
I, I, I would, I would say, I would say, put together what you think is the right way to do that, and then, you know, let us take a look at that, and we'll.
No problem.
So. Nine.
I agree with both of you.
That's fine, nine and ten, nine, good.
Okay, ten. So, yeah, so what, so what do you think about the tree issue? You know, the ones that are dead, and are they gonna fall down? And the, the, the one tree that I'm particularly enamored with is that spruce that's out there. Or fir, whatever the hell it is. And I'm concerned about those roots.
Which one?
I think it's, I think it's the green one that's off the property. I think it's that one. I think it's labeled on your survey deciduous. I think that's what it is. I think that's the one.
So it's possibly, it's possibly this one here, which is the.
I think it, I think it is.
Really the one that's the furthest off the property.
Yeah.
And it's sort of the furthest back from the root zone interruption that would occur as a result of the construction of the retaining wall.
And the retaining wall is pretty short there. It's only a couple feet tall, so we don't have to go.
So the retaining wall, hi, I mean, it's, regardless, we're still gonna be excavating twelve inches of the material to get the base for.
Yeah, I mean, and, and so it's not, it's not a question of how deep you go. I mean, you know, twelve inches is enough to demo the roots. So that's not the issue. The issue is where the crown is of that tree. And my concern is that you're gonna be cutting off, you know, a third of those roots. And, and that's my concern. So, so all, all that I think is being suggested here is get an arborist, you know, to, to go out and look at it and say, you know, what, what do we do? And traditionally, it would be root pruning and prepare it for construction. So there's that tree. But then there are the other trees, which are, some of them dead, I don't know which ones are dead.
There's a lot of norways and some kind of stragglers along the edge there. And so I can't really assess what.
I couldn't either.
So.
So maybe the arborist could take a look at those also, and just say, look, folks, if you leave this one, I think it could fall down in time, and you might wanna, you know, provide those recommendations, because it's already dead.
You mean, take it down now?
Yeah, yeah. So basically, to address those trees that are along there, in terms of the ones you're gonna save, how you're gonna save them, and the ones that are recommended to come down, because they're dead or diseased, and have the arborist look at that.
Okay, I'll look into getting an arborist.
And the reason being, he's the only one qualified at that level. So not, we're not just doing that to be a jerk. An arborist should consult. What about recyclables? That was, you got that one. Plans are not proposing. So, yeah, so what about that one, eleven? The, you know, basically, it's the sidewalk, and the, it's the apron connecting East, East Main Street to your property line. Is that?
Yeah, so I wasn't gonna do anything, because I, I don't think it's a problem. But if, if we wanted to take the curse off of it, we could just rebuild. Well, this one's gonna be rebuilt anyways.
Exactly.
The sidewalk's gonna stay in that location.
Correct.
It's, there's no, there's no reason to change the sidewalk. This will be a new apron, and it will be a flat grade from the gutter to the sidewalk. This, this guy here has, it has quicker up, and then flatter up near the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And we could, we could rebuild that.
Basically, yeah, basically, it's to take the curse out of that. Yep. I mean, if you're gonna be plowing there, you, you want that as smooth a transition also as possible. Let's see. Plans require. On those two Elm streets, I don't recall. Are there overhead wires there?
No, no, there's no wires.
Well, no.
No wires, great.
There is, there's a, a pole here, okay? This pole receives power from across the street here.
It's further, it's further to the west, though.
It's right here, goes just like this.
So, so.
That goes like this, and then, and then the power goes here and here. You either have the tree and prune it, or don't have the tree, because you can't.
Or, or, or you put a tree in that can grow under the wire and doesn't get that big. Which, which.
Right, those, those wires are pretty high, yeah.
And, and, and what I, what I would, what I, you know, you, so check it out. And, and if, if you've got an overhead wire issue, what I would suggest, and it's your call, I would suggest that the two trees that are marking your entrance coming in be the same. Versus one, little one in an elm growing up beside it. So that's the two Elms discussion.
Would that design change if the, that became a two-way entrance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The tree would be gone.
The plant appears to emit two trees. Oh, I think thirteen we talked about. That's the large coniferous tree. Done. Twelve-inch deciduous tree southeast corner.
So I, I, I said, okay, I can, I can move that level spreader, so that it's not aiming at that tree.
Okay.
What are those numbers?
James, will you? Will you take a look at that lower right-hand corner tree too, and, and pine in on, you know, the level of spreader? And if you think it's gonna be okay, and if not, you know, it might be worth substituting it somewhere.
Okay. Just with respect to the, you know, outlet control structure and, of the stormwater, et cetera. Larry did not do the drainage.
He did not.
He did not do it. I just wanna point out that one of the things, look at that, look at that invert there. It, it looked like it was never gonna fill the, it was never gonna fill the infiltrators. Maybe it was just a number, maybe it was the way it was labeled, but there was a mis, there was something weird there.
Well, that, it goes into the infiltrators, and then there's an outlet at the top of the infiltrators that goes back down. So that number might be lower than the infiltrator, but the outlet from the infiltrators is higher.
Okay. It wasn't showing, okay, I didn't see that. Okay, it looked as though it was just gonna do a dead drain. And did you, did you have actual soil, well?
Yes, we did, so we tested it.
What about the other two? Because the other two don't have outflows.
But not here.
That top one has an outflow?
No.
Yep, yep. You have a test for that? I didn't see that. I didn't see the, the log for that one? In the stormwater report? The only, the only soil logs that showed.
Testing for the, for the septic system.
Interesting.
So we do have it.
Interesting. You have it for the top one?
Yeah.
So you know where groundwater was. Okay, great. We'll be getting to that at some point.
Items fifteen through twenty are, no, through nineteen, those are just details, they're straightforward. Any issues with any of those?
Okay. Twenty-one is okay as well.
They all plan them, yeah, okay. Twenty, proposed retaining wall details should be provided in the plan. So that's just put the detail on the plan.
Yeah.
So the wall, if I'm not mistaken, the wall is raised above grade. And I think the wall that you've picked, I don't think it's a two-sided wall. the wall that you've picked, I don't think it's a two-sided wall.
No, it's not, but it has...
It has a little scoop where you put a little bit of soil that you never grow anything.
And we might play with that grade, but it, it's intended that you won't see that side of the wall.
Oh, okay. I was, I was misreading the plans then. I was thinking the plan was showing the wall. You were almost using like a curb stop at the parking area, like you'd raise it up like 18 inches above.
No, there'll be a curb there that will be against that, that wall. If we were gonna do a two-sided one, it would have, it would, both sides would be textured.
Okay, so that's the, if, if it's exposed on the other side.
If it's exposed on both sides, both sides will be textured.
What's the cap look like?
It's, it's, there's no cap. It's a piece. It's, it's all part of the precast.
So the cap is the stone itself. What does it look like? What does the top look like?
Now you got me.
You mean, is it flat or textured?
Well, is, does it look like it's just come out of an industrial park, or is it textured to look like it's a landscape?
That's a good question. I'll have, I'll have to get that answer for you, if I know what you're saying. Because the, the sides are...
Because sometimes they have bumps in the tops of them.
Yeah, no, it's not designed to be a top. So what happens is, that edge, you only see the very rounded part, which is textured, and then it drops back down, and then there's dirt.
Is it ready rock?
It's a recon, I believe. But the top is a plant or top.
It's the growth stuff on those tops.
Yeah, grass is typically what you grow, and was, sometimes gravel.
Yeah, that's what ends up being the best usually.
Yeah, we don't, we're not anticipating putting landscaping in there, like vegetation.
So if you could just verify that.
Yeah.
This isn't on this list, but your planned survey, getting a cer, the survey, survey stamp on it, or...
It's on there.
I saw an engineer's stamp, but I didn't see the survey.
It's both. We have both.
Both, perfect. Okay, great. Layout plan sheet, that's 21. 22, reviewing layout plan versus the architectural plans. Looks like there are some differences in the architectural plans that impact the site plan.
I'm gonna respond to that. I think he missed...
Okay, so you respond to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does show a change.
Okay. Okay, so you'll respond to those?
Yes.
All right, and I apologize, board. But, so that whole section of 22 was saying that the architecture plans, according to Larry, don't jive with the site plans, and they're gonna respond to it. We're not gonna get into it tonight.
They'll fix that up.
Review comments from East Block 7, Maple Street 6, and I says, "Maybe..." So here's my concern with that first one on 23, that first bullet. So the people in the back...
Yeah.
So you have, you have a wall that's six and a half feet high.
So, can, can we just, just pause there for one second?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I don't think it's six and a half feet.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong.
I think, I, I went through it again, and I think that mag, not that, it's a lot different, but it's, the maximum is five and a half feet. I didn't see any place where we were over We have a 101, 65, and this is a 97, so that's four and a half feet, well, five feet if you count the curb. So that's five feet. But I didn't see anywhere where it was six and a half.
Okay, so I, I'm too tired. I'm not gonna go through the plans, and I believe you. But the, the point is, you've got it right against the wall, that property line. And if I'm in a butter, which is part of the job of being, you know, planning board, I'm gonna wanna make sure that thing not only looks nice, and the blocks I think you've chosen are those, for lack of a better term, they're textured and they're nice, but they're the big scaled ones.
Two right fours.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they have to be for what you're doing. So they don't really lend themselves to feeling like residential, like a home. So what, what would be a great gesture would be to talk to the abutters and to say, "Look, you know, here's, are they aware of what you're doing here?"
Well, yeah, I mean, all the abutters were informed and made aware to come to the ZBA.
Yeah.
And...
None of them came?
No. So, you know, I feel like...
I'm just curious, how were they informed?
We, we went through the ZBA process, where they were, letters were mailed, and, you know, the formal, because we had to do the formal ZBA process. How, you guys would do your normal planning board if it was for approval?
You sent out registered mail, that whole thing?
Everything. The town did everything. So, you know, we notified everyone, and they had their opportunity to come, and it, and it wasn't an issue.
Well, I mean, doesn't, I'm not, yeah, if they didn't show up, that's, that's, that's their responsibility. And you can't do anything on their property without...
We talked about that, and we talked about it before the meeting. We could put some plants on that, that, on the top side of that...
How, how close is, how close is the wall to the property line? How far do you have it setback off?
It says 18 inches.
Two feet.
Larry said 18.
What if you, what if you planted a vine?
Yeah, it says like, yeah, why they said earlier, so...
He said that earlier.
So make an effort to try to...
We could just put it on the plan. We could put...
We could just put a, plant a vine.
Yeah. Okay, so that was what that was about. Add loam seed. It's just looking for a detail that ensures that you're gonna get enough loam over the infiltration system so something can grow. You see what I mean by there was a bunch of space that just wasn't labeled? Whatever you're gonna put in there, whether it's crushed stone, or grass, or make sure that just gets But I'd note saying all plantings. That's gonna be part of your condo docs. It's, it's gonna be the same thing as the snow maintenance issue. The next bullet indicate how it was... So you're, you're aware of that one, right?
We are, and what we, we were going with was the decision for Bailey, which was tree for tree, was what we did on Bailey. We are, we are planting a bunch of, a bunch of trees on the site.
Yeah.
And replacing one tree with two, hopefully.
So that's where you're, you're using the latest kind of decision and going tree for tree.
So I, I think, and I, I'm not positive, but I think the way that ordinance was crafted is it allows those trees to be located elsewhere in Georgetown and proposed property. So can you just make a tally and exhibit of, you know, right now, you have 10 inches of caliper total that you're taking down. You're planting seven inches total of caliper. There's three left over. We have, we'll, we'll find a home for that three inches somewhere else in Georgetown, in another public street or...
Almost like a tree bank.
But it's not, but you, but now you're doing wood for wood again, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But there is no definition of wood to wood, and I've searched everywhere, and I've searched previous decisions that the board has made, and everything has been tree to tree. So if they're ta, so it, it's not wood to wood replacement, it's more tree to tree replacement.
I don't think that's how the, how it's written, though. I don't think that's how the ordinance is written. I think it's written wood.
It is written wood to wood, but there is no definition of wood to wood. And what has been done in the past has been tree to tree, because there is zero definition of wood to wood.
You mean like oak to pine?
No, he, he's saying inches wise.
Well, this is 40B. You ignore all that zoning.
You're saying put one, I'm saying, you take one tree out, you put one tree down.
You put, you take out a twelfth.
It's one wood.
Right, but you can't put the same sized tree. I mean, I can't buy a lot of that.
Yeah, but so that's what...
A huge tree, right?
It would seem to me that that's what wood to wood means.
On a tree, it'll last longer.
That's what it means.
What? I'm sorry?
Tree to tree, wood to wood.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get hung up on that. Does anybody else wanna?
That's what it means, tree to tree.
First of all, I think if we do it, we're gonna be, we're pretty much gonna be there as to what we're planting on site compared to what we're taking down.
I just wanna make sure that the trees that go in are, have a good size to them, and so that we're not waiting 30 years for them to have an impact.
Right, but I can't, I have replaced.
We just have to make, we have to be careful because we, we don't wanna take apart the street and the sidewalk to plant the tree. We've gotta plant the root wall in that area that's available.
Correct.
You're talking about, you're talking about the street tree, I assume.
What are, what are you thinking for a caliper size on street trees? Like, just in, in your mind, what's, what's typical minimum size you're thinking?
Well, I guess it depends on how much of a, of a planting area it has.
Yeah.
To work with, and I, I'm not flashing on how much dirt they have.
Six, about six feet or so.
Yeah.
You know, probably, you know, I could see, I could see a three and a half minimum inch going in there.
Three and a half.
Yeah. They, we, they put down in front of the spot, a sergeant, a columnar sergeant cherry in a very small pit.
Yeah.
It's doing really well.
Oh, good.
And I think that went in at three-inch caliber.
Okay.
All right. Lighting, those are pretty straightforward.
Yeah, those are, those are fine. In fact, I, I thought that, I thought that we had made that bollard 3,000K, because I know, I know your, your feelings about it. So that's no problem changing that, and I'll try and find a more historic-looking bollard.
And then, I don't know what, where the streetlight is out, out there, but, you know, that may impact if you even need one at your entrance, or if you don't, you don't need much lighting. You don't need to overblast it. But, so... So the drainage calcs haven't been done. Harry pointed that out, so... So, all right, we've gone through the list. Down the table is, you know, the dumpster, the trash coming in and out one way versus two-way. Seems like that's the basic question that's on the table.
This is 600-pound gorilla here.
What's, what's...
This is 600-pound gorilla.
Can I take you guys through the, our, our option of the two-way?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
That's it.
That's it?
That's the 600-pound gorilla. I mean, we gotta walk away here.
We thought of this on the way today.
Pushing these folks, steering these folks.
So, we could, if we made this a two-way, there's enough width there, we'd have to get rid of two of those spaces.
I'm sorry, could you go back to the first page? Does anybody mind that? Because it's what we've been looking at all night. Thank you.
So we could make this two-way. We might be able to salvage one of these spaces and do that. So that would become two-way. So you'd have a two-way in and out here, and we could leave that arch and put a space or the handicap space here.
Mm-hmm.
And then have two spaces here that were for one unit tandem parking area. These, these people do exactly that. They have, one unit has two parking spaces here, and they're, they're tandem parking spaces. So we could pick up a couple of spaces here and put our handicapped here, and maybe have the same number of, of parking spaces. But it would still be, you wouldn't have a route around the building. It would be in and out, but it would be two-way. And that would, that would eliminate the, the issue with that, with that corner.
No, that person can't turn around.
Right, this person would have to, they would have to...
I just wanna point it out. This person can, they either have to like back in, like they do now, you know, or, or they're gonna have to back out. That's one unit is gonna have to do that.
But again, that's what, that's what these people do here. It's the same situation.
The whole point of the two-way is to eliminate that other entrance, right? In my mind.
You don't, we won't have enough spots. If you, either that or you're gonna have to, or we're gonna have to give us a waiver that we don't need two spots per unit.
Would, would you gain anything by, by extending your parking over your infiltrator?
Not unless we did...
And then you could...
Not unless we did tandem spaces.
tandem there.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a prohibition to tandem spaces?
Just a quick question. If you moved your handicap over here, couldn't you get an extra one up there?
I wasn't following you. I was listening to him.
If we, if we can fit the handicapped in here with the loading area, we could, we would have one more space there.
Oh, so maybe we'd have enough, right?
So then, now you're just down two.
If we lost two...
So that's 14.
If we lost two, then we can put one here and one here. Oh, you lost, yeah, one here and one. You still have that one problem?
No, you do have one there, the handicapped there.
So the handicap would move here?
Yeah, the only thing I don't know is if I can salvage that space.
We might be one space short.
So you'd be one space short on the two-per-unit calculation?
Yeah.
But you'd still have the second access. You wouldn't be able to eliminate that, eliminate that second access.
Yeah, you would.
Yeah, you would.
You would be eliminating that.
You could make that a pedestrian...
What is, I'm just, this is just a what-if. What does the board think about a waiver on that?
Going down to 14?
One, they're, they're short one parking space.
In a heartbeat, except for me.
I don't know if there are restrictions, but it's literally a stone's...
I mean, this isn't us. We're not granting any waivers. This is the consent.
No, it's just a recommendation.
It's just a stone's throw, though, from the corner of the property to town parking.
It is, and, and I have done surveillance on that parking lot, and it is never full. I have tried every different day at every different time, and it's not full. So...
Just saying.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Just wanted, I was waiting, I was hoping to be able to use that.
We're not gonna whip on that.
I, my, my first knee-jerk reaction is, you know, if you got, if you had two-way, you lost one parking space, and you got rid of that other exit, that would, yeah, never say never, I can change my mind, but I would support that.
Ditto.
Yep.
For what it's worth.
And that basically solves all the issues.
Solves a lot of the...
Hosts the problem.
Everything except for the issues that you want dealt with in the condo docs.
Yeah, and those are just...
There's no other issues.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't see those issues either.
Onto drainage.
So you, you do still have the drainage. Larry's gonna have to do his drainage report.
He said he's all set.
Oh, I don't...
Yeah.
So strike two.
Just got a text. Just got a text. Say, "Go with it." It's cool.
This is real cool.
All right, so it's going on nine o'clock. I think we accomplished a lot. I think you have a sense of where we are. How do we handle this next? Do we, do, do they pull this stuff together and give it back to us for us to finalize this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be most preferable, but Rich, how long is it going to take realistically for you to modify the plans and...
So I don't wanna go and modify the plan and do a whole new plan. I think, I think what we should do is come up with a concept, send it right back to you guys, and maybe have Larry look at it, and then if we get a general sense that Larry's okay with it...
Yep.
Then we'll go forward and, and...
Yep.
I don't wanna spend...
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And make the change. I think, I think it's probably gonna take... A week to do, right? So probably two weeks, just so we can fit it in.
That, that is just not fair, what he did to you.
So probably, probably a couple of weeks.
You're gonna do that in 20 years.
I gotta say yes to my...
So, so, so a couple of weeks, you'd have that diagram to...
Within a couple of days, I can have something to ship for the concept.
Okay.
And then, and then it's a couple of weeks after getting a general sense that we should go forward with that.
Okay. So how would that, how would that work?
So we have either March 14th or March 28th.
I think it's gonna be, it's already March.
Am I making a motion to continue this, or is this really not any...
No, it's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing, yeah.
Yeah, there's no, no hearing. What was the second one?
March 28th.
What, how's our 14th looking for agenda?
Busy.
Yeah. So I, I was gonna say...
Too busy to look at a concept?
I was gonna say, try it on the 14th, but if, if that doesn't work, then...
Yeah, if you, if you guys wanted to have, have that discussion at a meeting, then I guess we would request a few minutes on the 14th to discuss the concept. If we think we can do it offline, then we'd take the 28th and...
Well, I think we should give Larry a shot to come to our meeting and explain it.
Let's, 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 how about that? If you, if you get to, if you get to Larry and to John, or get to John, and John will get it to Larry, or whatever, in a couple of days, by the end of the week...
By the end of this week? It's tomorrow.
Yeah, kinda quick.
You know, I mean, real, you know, realistically, this, you know, let's revisit Bailey Lane. I mean, typically, all of this stuff takes time to do, and, you know, it always looks rosy in this end at, at a meeting, but in reality, you know, you're talking about getting Larry to review it. They have to revise the plans and...
He needs two weeks to review it.
Yeah.
When is your next meeting with the zoning board?
So it was supposed to be March 6th. I think the zoning board gave you guys till the beginning of April, right?
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Till the first weekend, because I think their, their meetings are the first Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
So their, April 3rd, I think, was their deadline for us to have something from you guys on an approval or not.
We could do that on the 28th.
So Larry's here on the 28th, and he receives, he receives things.
Well, he, that gives plenty of time, and, and quite honestly, you know, yeah, yeah.
Right? That's workable.
I think that's very workable.
Yeah, and it's realistic.
Good mind. He's gonna have to do his drainage calcs and all that stuff.
Yeah, he does still need to do that, too.
But wait, I thought we were gonna do a concept first.
It's gonna get easier. So I, I would, I would request if it's possible that I'd be able to email your board, John, and Larry the concept, and we could probably turn around the concept tomorrow by the end of the day. So you can have it at least by email. He, He doesn't need the paper copy to look at and say, generally I'm okay with it, with the concept.
With the exception of the barn staying where it is, that was Larry's idea.
I just experienced a six, actually it was a twelve-year ZBA forty-B plan. Ultimately got approved twelve years later, so I mean.
We're not doing that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Fast track this a little bit better.
No, I would say, I keep forgetting.
You guys can do it.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say I keep forgetting we're closed, this office here is closed on Friday. I keep forgetting that and so, you know.
And I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna be back, personally I'm not gonna be back until Wednesday of next week. So I have Wednesday and Thursday to get everything together.
So there's real world and so, you know, do you?
So can we email the concept plan directly to Larry since?
I would say you can do directly to Larry and CC John, don't send it to us.
Yep.
And John, when he gets back, will send it to us.
All right, very good.
Okay, so Larry and I'll CC.
And then, yeah.
We might wanna just send John an email though that's saying that, I don't wanna speak for anyone.
We'll continue on our way. It'll just be, if he raises a red flag, we can at least address it in the process.
That's if he came back for a content, because I don't know if he's even back.
The majority of the board were okay with eliminating one, possibly two parking spaces. So that he knows why they're submitting.
I hate to, trying to help and sometimes it just makes it worry, we get into trouble for this. I was gonna say to add on your email that, you know, I will send an email to Larry tomorrow.
Sounds like a good idea.
I will send him an email tomorrow and I will let him know that he's gonna get the plan from you. I'll let him know what the board's thoughts were in terms of generally two-way, thumbs up, okay with one less space, if that all works.
Tell him there's a new plan coming.
Yep, and the plan's coming and that we.
Generally not a problem with keeping the barn where it is.
Yeah.
And if the board, is the board okay with, I'm gonna say Larry, I'll give you a call next week, just to talk to him.
I'm good.
All right, and who knows, maybe Larry, maybe we'll talk and he'll say, geez, Rob, we looked at it and it's looking pretty damn good. You know, he'll be all right. The hell.
Stink bug.
Yeah.
No, no, that's not a stinker.
No? Who's that?
I don't know what that's called, but I know the stink bugs.
Rob, you will tell him that we're sending a concept plan and that he just needs to get back to us whether, so that we can do the drawings? I mean, he just needs to know to get back to us on the concept.
I have your email address, I think.
I'll give it to you, I'll give you my card.
Okay, if you do that, I'll copy you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're getting there.
So we're on for March twenty-eighth?
Correct. I don't know what they're called, but they're really, you can put them upside down and they flip right back over again.
George. They do have an odor.
Oh, that one does?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Minor stink.
It's a weird odor.
Mini stink. Okay, we have one more item. I believe, I don't see anybody from parking that.
Are they meeting right now downstairs?
I don't know.
I didn't see it, but usually that's all.
You guys wanna take a five-minute break?
When do I not wanna take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break.
So we have one more item on the planning review and then a couple of member or public concerns. So we have the status of East Main Street Recreation Park. We don't have to open this meeting, do we? It's just, right, so.
We don't have Larry's.
Yeah, Larry never had a chance.
So we don't have Larry's report. I took a look at the drawings and I'll tell you what my first blush is at those, unless you guys wanna jump in. Basically, what I, what I, what's going, what I understand is going on today, and John, correct me if I'm wrong. So we are simply going to be making a recommendation to the building inspector or code enforcer who makes the official decision whether we can open this up or not. So that's that piece. It's not us, it's less. So we have gathered all this information, which is exactly what we should have done, this is all great. And we have some of the information which we didn't get all that long ago. And we are still missing some significant pieces of information that we have to have in order to do our work in terms of reviewing the ASBILT. And that primarily is, what's this?
That's less is.
Oh, okay. What we're missing are, there apparently are no field reports after the eleventh field report. And there was a lot of construction replaced after the eleventh. And we're still looking for the specifications manual, which will outline what testing compaction tests were required. And so then we can get to know what we can ask to look for. You know, the spec's gonna say, you shall do this test, you shall perform this test, dah 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 dah. So with that, we'll then know what to look for. Right now, we don't have any of that, so we can't say that what has been built is what the plan called for. For example, something as simple as the baseball field. There's a certain type of soil mix that is the infield. And that mixes in the specifications. And there's a way you test that to ensure that what is being put down is that. If we don't have that kind of information, if those records haven't been kept, we are not gonna be able to know what we're accepting, if it's consistent with the drawings or not. So that's, so there's a chunk of information that we still can't act on. That said, what we do have on the ASBILT drawings, there are a number of fundamental issues that are not per plan, that I am not comfortable with, that need to be addressed in order to open this park. For example, you're supposed to have a twenty-foot wide gravel driveway coming down to the dog park. What's been built is it next down on the turn to twelve feet wide. And it goes twelve feet wide for a fair distance. I'm not comfortable opening up a park or recommending that it's per plan where you don't have two-way traffic anymore, you have people coming in, there's no place for people to park. It's not delineated and you get a twelve-foot wide stretch of road, how people coming in, it's a safety issue. It's a fundamental safety issue. And so there are several items like that at my first review of the ASBILT plan that is, I'm leaning towards, I don't know how I can support opening the park up the way it is. But that's just as of this point in time. Again, there's the whole specification manual and everything, that's gonna give us information that we don't even know about.
Well, the building inspector is saying in this, did you already get a copy of this?
I did, I didn't read it till.
Number four, he's saying that as there is no building code-related activity being performed, I would rely on the planning board's onsite engineering consultant and final sign-off from the planning board or director.
And we can, I mean, we can give him our recommendations to what we find in Larry Graham's, but he's the one that does the official act. So, and I think that's consistent, I think that's consistent. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's underground that you can't see. There's subsurface drains on the plans that I don't know if they were put in. There's a pervious gravel drive that needs to drain a certain way and I have no idea if that's per the specifications. Larry's gonna need to do his review. There's no place for handicap parking to park, it's just a gravel parking lot. And for handicap parking, you need to have a surface that's walkable. And the idea of opening up a park that isn't handicapped accessible, you know, is another one that falls into the camp of issues that need to be corrected. Guardrails, there's a guardrail that's missing that's part of a slope along the drive to help protect against that.
Rob, I have a question on the handicap piece though. So the fields over at the soccer field on, no, the ones that are right in front of the development on?
Little's Hill?
Little's Hill. That's a gravel driveway and it has, I mean, just has a plaque that says handicap parking, but it's not paved or anything like that.
So on this project, because this is, this project, I can't speak to the Little's Hill approval process, but this project was a new project and any new project is required to do certain design standards. And you, if you're gonna have handicap parking spaces, you have to have a place where the wheelchair can, the surface is of a certain nature that you can roll on. So Little's Hill, that wouldn't suffice, that wouldn't meet handicapped accessible code. So I can't speak to that one. So that, but that's a discussion. I mean, if the board feels like that's worth taking as-is in order to get the field open, okay. That's the kind of discussion we need to have. You know, I don't know how, I don't know how I'm gonna get comfortable with the twelve-foot wide portion of road. That's just kinda crazy.
John, did you talk to Mike about, what's this about liability and insurance that he's, the town isn't gonna cover it?
Yeah, unless it's determined that it's safe and provides for proper life safety access, what's that?
He's just looking for a statement from us?
Yeah, you know, Frank could just, you know, observing this. How about an analogy like this? You're gonna buy a house from a developer and you're ready to pass papers, but, you know, there's no bathroom, there's no kitchen in the house, you know, bedroom walls need to be plastered and everything else. You know, but you're buying the house, you know, you're buying something that you're not gonna be able to occupy. You know, it's the same thing what we're dealing with here. They would love to use the park, the field is usable, dog park is usable. But the park overall is not completed. There's no formal parking provided for that was required when it was approved. You know, the roadway isn't as wide as it's supposed to be in accordance with the standards of review that determine the twenty-foot wide was what was needed for safe vehicular, two-way traffic and for emergency services. So, yeah, the park people would love to be able to use the park, but it's not something that we caused as a planning board for the project not to be finished and deliverable as a usable product. So, you know, how are we supposed to deal with this? You know, just, okay, we're the planning board, have at it. Good luck.
I'm not comfortable with that, I mean, we had a special permit for this. There were major elements of the design. One of them's a rain garden that handles all the stormwater, the other one's the parking. And the other one is the skate park. And right in our decision, if we open right now without a parking area, they would have to park on that roadway coming in. That's a specific prohibition in our decision. There should be no parking on the roadway.
Plus it's dangerous.
For so many reasons, so many reasons.
You know, and just to go on, if it was a Dunkin' Donuts, if it was a subdivision road, you know, it wasn't built.
Don't say Domino's, because then it would've opened before we got to review.
Anything that was reviewed and approved wouldn't be allowed to be open unless it was satisfactorily completed for, especially for emergency services and for parking. Because you'll end up having kind of a dog and pony show, Wild West show, whatever, of parking down there, because there's no formal parking associated.
I can just see cars jockeying and pulling off to the side, and kids running around, and it's just.
Stuck in the mud. It's very soft shoulders down there, if you haven't been down there.
I don't know how they, so let's, let's say, I like, I like the magic wand, because it frees me up in terms of thinking, and I, let's say they have the ability to fix all these things tomorrow. Where are they gonna get the money to do that? How does that work?
I mean, nobody wants to be the stick of the mud.
The last time.
Nobody wants to be the party pooper in this regard, in keeping the park from being open, but, you know, is it ready? Is it safe? Is it usable? Even primitively usable?
I, part of our responsibility, in addition to the safety part, which everybody understands, I think, and gets, you know, if you can't support opening a park because it's not safe, that's understandable, the reasons why. But there's another part, that the town paid for what those drawings bought and were approved. And without knowing what actually has been built, you're basically saying, yep, we accept it all, and we are assuming that the town's got what it paid for.
Well, I don't see how you can accept it, we can't accept that it's not done. I mean, I don't need an as-built to walk down there and look and see that there's no skate park. I don't need an engineer to tell me, "There's no parking lot, there's a big hole there." Well, I mean, you certainly, I'm sure the Concom's not too thrilled about the fact that the stormwater's not being managed by the rain garden that was designed as all part of that.
They must have a number of issues, I'm sure.
Perhaps, but I mean, the bottom line was that those three elements went out for bid, and the amount of money that the Park and Rec had in the appropriation didn't come close, so they couldn't award it. They're gonna have to ask for more money at this point.
It's one thing for bids to come in way over, I don't, yeah, whatever.
I think one of the.
It shouldn't happen that way.
I think one of the problems that happened was that when all of the estimates were done, remember, this goes back.
2014.
Yeah. You were just getting out of an economic depression where contractors were very, very willing to take projects for a tight margin, just to have the work. And now that, that landscape has changed a great deal.
Dramatically.
I mean, if, yeah, yeah, they're just, they're throwing out a number. If they get it, yeah, I'll pull from this guy.
The work that's going on right now is overwhelming.
So, I mean, they can come up, they don't need the work that desperately.
No, it's true. Just going back to what you were talking about, though, about things that weren't done. And, so, if the skate park's not done, I still feel comfortable saying these other things should be open if we're, if it's safe. Are you on the same page with that?
I can live without a skate park, yeah. I don't know the mechanism under which we do it, because we, a part of our special permit, I think it's called a, we certify the completion, it's a certi, it's a certificate of completion that we issue. I don't know if we can do a partial, maybe we can do a partial.
Maybe they come back with a modification and cross out the skate park and.
I would.
That's an interesting concept, and I like that you mentioned that, because CPC report, let me throw the CPC hat on. CPC report, there is a group of individuals, the Kiem Coi Foundation that came to the CPC, they were, they're looking for seed money to do the engineering and design and permitting for three basketball courts. And the three basketball courts would be there and down near the area where the skate park is, and it looked, again, only it was concept, very concept, to take part of the parking area. So you may not have, you know, so that would be a modification.
They've got a, they've.
And I think what's happened.
They're out of control.
I think what's happened is, there's a great deal of disappointment, because I think the, a lot of the wind came out of the sails when the bid that would've finished this fell through. And at this point now, this new, this new proposal, I think everybody's saying, well, let's sit back and let's see what happens.
Yeah.
Let's wait. So you're years off at that point, huh?
But there's, there's, there's no excuse for allowing the road to go in 12 feet wide. There's just no, and, and, and it should've been part.
That was Gail, Gail was the engineer, and I don't know what happened there.
But so, so if somebody screwed up, then who does the town talk to about pursuing that person that is not, that wasn't competent in that job to make sure that the job was completed correctly? I mean, that's not Park and Rec's fault, they weren't building the road, so.
The engineer, that's Gail, that's Gail's associate.
This is where the, there's a whole, this is where the field reports come in. And the last field report, my understanding is the 11th field report, which is a long way, there were, there was a lot of work that happened after that, and for whatever reason, my understanding is there are no more field reports. I don't know why.
But.
That's the way you tell who's observing the work.
This is where my industry comes in, so, somebody screwed up, let's, let's find out, I mean, presumptively, this board should be able to say to them, well, this is what, what has failed. Go find out who screwed up and.
My guess is that they ran out of money, and they told Gail to stop. That's my guess.
It's possible, they ran out of money, stopped, yeah.
Because Gail wouldn't, in the middle of construction, it would be highly unlikely for a design firm to be preparing field reports and having prepared a specification manual, which runs through the whole project, and be going out there every week, every other week, up through 11, and then all of a sudden just drop it. That would be unusual.
But it would seem odd to me that it would cost substantially less to build a 12-foot road than a proper, than a 20-foot road, like that, how does, who authorized that, I guess is the.
It's, I don't know who accepted it.
Of course you don't. No, and I'm not saying that you should, or that any of us should, but I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, you know, who would know that? Who would be that person?
We can't move forward on this until we hear from Larry.
Well, until we hear from Larry, and also the specifications manual is a very important piece of document that I wanted, that we need to, so we can't respond to it.
That's part of the bid documents.
Correct.
Yep.
I don't think we should bother with, in my opinion, I don't think we should bother with Larry.
Mike Farrell should have that. Mike does not have that as.
Procurement officer.
And it wasn't advertised, Mike Farrell, it was not advertised in the manner of which you prescribed earlier today in an email.
Wait, I'm totally lost, what are you talking about?
The specification manual.
Yeah.
Gail Associates.
Yeah.
Is responsible to have that.
Yeah.
So that's where we have to look to get it.
Oh, yeah, of course. I'd go right to the.
Yeah, Mike doesn't have a copy of it.
Oh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't even.
But that's what Park and Rec needs to get, that.
I think that's.
Gail needs to provide that, right?
All you do is you.
But I don't think it's up to us, honestly, it's, the Park and Rec should be here. I don't think we should even.
Well, I don't, did they, do you know if they knew we had the meeting tonight?
Yeah.
This is the second time, that, no show. And if they're interested in this, you know, put more money into something that there's no interest, that's crazy.
Well, the killers, they haven't asked for much more money.
But, yeah, that's what I don't understand.
That's certainly not going to be enough to finish it. I think they're in a, I think they're in a wait-and-see mode now.
Yeah, they don't seem to.
It's just like, that's all it is.
I mean, politically, there's a lot of demand to get it open.
Correct.
Yes.
Technically.
There's nobody to do it.
There's a problem.
Keep in mind, this, this wasn't done with a bond. I, you know, we have a lot of fields at the Pembroke, we got the new turf field out at, out at the high school, those were all done, a big bond, the money's all sitting in an account, put the bid, bid gets done, the work just gets done. This was specific, this was intentionally done in little phases, little bit, little bit at a time, as the money became available, because, but we don't have a bonding capacity anymore since we did the million three for the turf.
But what's disturbing, what's disturbing to me is that Park and Rec has asked for many other reasons to use money since this time. They have done different projects there, and evidently, a couple of years back, they lost interest in it. Why haven't they, you know, gotten one project, project finished before they got another project going? I think that's, that's what's wrong.
I know a number of people that were very active, have left the board. Maybe, maybe they need to add a little new blood, that's how it always is.
I don't think we should waste our time with it, I really don't.
I would, I would, I would say that.
At this point right now, maybe we just recommend that you don't open the park. I mean, it's a, it's a no-brainer that it's not done.
Well, I, well, I, I mean, I don't know.
You can walk through there and see it.
If people are looking, if people are looking to us for a response tonight, and as of tonight, we'd have to say, "You can't open the park," but we're still waiting for more information.
Yeah, we can, we can put this on for the 14th meeting.
What do we need to know? I mean, it's not ready.
Well, no, I mean, but we'll get an official report.
We could get a plan, we could get, okay, here's our, here's our strategy, but right now, we've got nothing.
Here are the four things that have to be done, you know, in order to address the health, safety, welfare concerns.
Right.
Before we can even talk about.
Correct.
And that's, that's.
Instead of just saying, no.
Gives us a point.
Yeah, we're open in negotiation, no skate park, life goes on, but parking.
You have to park.
Yeah, you have to have wide enough roads so people can get around with you.
And I can only imagine the issues that they have with Concom. Let me ask you just a completely ridiculous question, and forgive it, but I'm tired tonight, I just, this is in the back of my head.
You think you're tired, you think you're tired tonight?
Yeah, you wait.
Get used to it.
So, somebody goes out with a can of spray paint and paints lines, do we have, I mean, on where the parking lot should be, does that cover the parking issue? I mean, I know it doesn't.
If you drive in there, there's a two-foot drop.
Oh, okay.
And there's, and, and there's also handicap parking out there, too.
To be practical, to use for.
Well, John, so, so can we, on this agenda item.
Yep.
We'll wrap it up by just noting that, you know, Park and Rec didn't attend, and there's still information we're looking for, and we're gonna wait for Larry's information, and we're gonna wait for specifications and field reports, and, as of today, we can't support it.
And who is going to pay for Larry?
We'll put it on for the 14th.
14th, yeah.
Where is Larry's payment coming from?
That's from our budget, right?
No, that was, you know, they say he sat right there and said, they'll pay, that's theirs.
Maybe that would be something that we might wanna.
Does that mean check in the mail? If they have no money, where is this coming from?
Good question. Okay, so.
He did say that, I just.
Member of public concerns, there's a review of zoning amendment, John?
Yes. I can give a quick forebode of everything. The OSRD would, has now been forwarded to Mike Farrell to go to Attorney Eichmann for the review, and get it set up for a warrant, so that's been finalized. Everybody has these staff reports, there's a color-coded map, but I only provide it initially in the electronic copies, and these color-coded maps show the CA, Ian, CB zoning district specifically. They are side by side of one another, the CA being the downtown area, primarily in the CB district, being on the west side of Central Street, being the one lot that now houses the CVS Plaza. Across the street is.
I'm sorry, it looks like the CA is on the corner of East Main and Central?
Correct.
And CB is two lots that are separated by, or two parcels that are separated by Central Street?
That is correct, and that, two districts.
Two districts.
And the east side would be Crosby's.
Yeah.
And the service station.
All the way to Elm Street.
The CB should be listed right on the pink, not on the white. That CB is in the wrong place.
Well, that CB, the green area, that's the, like, the safety building, police and fire in Town Hall.
I think she's talking about.
The label, the label.
CB is right here, see this?
Yeah.
Pink is the CB.
So.
Yeah, that should be, that should be in the pink, and it's not.
The fire, the police is over here. Here, I'm talking over here. This shouldn't be in there.
No, that's, that should be in the pink, that pink area.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so that's misplaced, I'm gonna circle that and make that change.
The label there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So what this is all about is, last week, we had an Economic Development Committee meeting, and we had the architect for the CVS complex come in to talk to the Economic Development Committee about their proposal, what they're working on. They're having trouble occupying the second floor. They do have an elevator, and the second floor right now is comprised of a bunch of offices. And what they'd like to do is entertain the possibility of transforming that into multifamily residential apartments. You know, something that the town needs more of in this general area, and it's a very convenient location.
Downtown, perfect.
Yeah.
Can I put the brakes on one second?
Sure.
This, this was noticed for a public hearing, right?
It will be.
But we're not in that right now, we're just.
No, no, I'm just, I'm briefing you.
Thank you, thank you.
And as Harry pointed out, and I sent out an email to the chairman about moving forward with this, even though the planning board as a whole was not introduced to this concept. So Mr. Hoover referred me to Harry, and Harry went over everything in quick order, and he warned me that, you know, board members might bristle about this, but, you know, we're really in a tight timeframe in the Economic Development Committee, and of which I'm the staff for, you know, we really wanna try to accomplish things. We don't wanna sit on and do nothing, you know, or put off what we can do today. So we worked in quick order and got a unanimous vote out of the committee last week to move forward with this. And I said, well, the only caution is, I do wanna run it by the chairman at minimum before advertising, but we are trying.
And I trusted you, Harry.
And my, when I said the members would bristle, not at the concept, but just at the fact that something was coming, you know, seemingly unheard of, and the fast track, so to speak, for notice.
How high is this building gonna be?
No, it's, it, there would be no change in the footprint, and no, no change in the height. And, you know, it's really a matter of an economic development issue, and to really help out that particular plaza become more sustainable, more productive and successful over a longer period of time. So then the only other possibility would be, and I don't envision it really, is Crosby's going up another story. I don't see that, but, you know, they'd have to provide for the parking. And as I did with the architect over here, I said, and I did preface this in my staff report, that you're not going to have a cakewalk through this, you still have to meet all of the stringent criteria of a very stringent board, you know, relative to your parking.
Well, that's nice that you just said that.
I did, and I.
It's stringent now from our planner.
Yeah. That's good, though, stringent is good. You know, you're not, you're not a rubber stamp. Stringent is good.
This, this also goes all the way down to, this would be the building supply.
Hey, you want them to know we mean business, you know? Not just a cakewalk.
So, I mean.
We're friendly.
It goes pretty far down there.
So anyway, that's what.
It goes all the way down Elm Street.
Oh, yeah. In essence, this is almost a 40R workaround.
Yeah.
That's what it should be. If it was a 40R, I understand the state has money in the pot now. We could be getting money from these units.
Yeah, right, you could. Okay, so, and that's stuff, that is, that is stuff that's coming, and I'd love to have a few minutes of your time before we all fall asleep, to go over what's going on with the Economic Development Committee, because it's really getting exciting at this point in time. So we have that scheduled for the next planning board meeting, along with.
That's the opening of the public hearing?
Yes, that would be the opening of the public hearing for that particular ordinance. And then we do have one more additional amendment proposed for next, our next meeting, and that's the definition for continuous buildable, building area. As Tilly pointed out at the last meeting, and. out at the last meeting, and when we were reviewing the OSRD ordinance, this is a separate, entirely separate ordinance amendment that had to be advertised for. And the proposed definition is in strict accord with what the board agreed to at the last meeting, when we were reviewing this in detail. So that's been advertised, and that will be our second public hearing on zoning amendments at our next meeting. And then you, you guys gave me the go-ahead with the cannabis bylaw issues and, and publishing for that. And what I have this evening to hand out to all board members is the article itself that I was able to carve out the time all day this took to draft up this proposed regulation of the use and distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed.
Did we get this electronically, John? Did that get out?
No, I'm gonna send that out electronically after this.
Thank you.
After this meeting. I just freshly finished that at about five o'clock today, and I sent it off to the town administrator and requested Mike to forward it to John Eichmann. Actually, I sent it to John Eichmann also, because I've been working with him all week on this. We, we already have the public hearing advertisement set, and he's reviewed that for its accuracy, its necessary language. In all likelihood, at this point in time, we'll be ready to go with this ordinance for a public hearing on March 28th. So that's important, to meet that date. We could have it on April 11th, and that would be the absolute dead date. But by having it on the 28th, I really feel comfortable right now that we'll be able to meet that. Then we'll have two meetings if we have to, you know, with no significant changes there, too. But what's, what, the, the simple part of this ordinance is that it takes what we already have on the books, ordinance-wise, for the medical marijuana, and introduces the capacity for the town to meet the ordinance needs for the recreational marijuana cannabis issues. That, that ordinance itself, it describes, delineates what the overlay district will be for this as proposed, and that would be a replication of medical marijuana overlay district minus the area downtown. Now, there is an effort afoot to eliminate the medical marijuana dispensary capacity in the downtown area.
We don't have that.
Yes, there is. There's a little, yep, there's a little bit of the overlay district in the corner of East Main and North Street, right there. That is being proposed, and it may come before us through the Board of Selectmen, their effort, that may come in as a warrant article, as a separate warrant article to eliminate that for the medical marijuana. For the recreational marijuana facility locations, it's not going to be part of that, and it's explained in that section of the proposed order.
Can I, can I just ask, while it's fresh in my mind? So if, if I'm understanding what you're saying, when we, when we accepted as a town the medical, medical marijuana-
Yeah.
-we had a bylaw, and we also had an overlay district-
Yeah.
-and those were done separately, as separate articles. This now is going to incorporate the overlay district as part of the bylaw, so it's one?
Well, within the medical, it describes, delineates, there's a section in it that actually delineates the area. It doesn't show it on a map. It says it's gonna be on the overlay district mapping of the town.
Right.
And there is a separate description of that.
Okay.
So it fits on the map where it's supposed to, right?
Okay.
Well, in this ordinance, it, it, what it says is that it replicates the existing-
Okay.
-overlay district. So it overlays over the medical marijuana-
Okay.
-overlay district. Now, it is gone to, it, it has gone to John Eichmann, so any further amendments that have to be made to the body of that text, and/or any further amendments that have to be advertised for, whether it's a separate advertisement for an overlay district-
Mm-hmm.
-for this-
Right.
-that is actually described, what the borders are. You know, that's another thing that we'll have to be dealing with.
So the, the district confines will be part of the hearing for the bylaw itself?
Yeah.
Okay, so those aren't separated? Those are combined?
And then, and then there's one other item that I did write down.
I have to confess that I'm not feeling very up to speed on this. I, I, I feel like, I don't know about you guys, but we, this is, it's a very important piece of work that we're doing here, and do you guys feel like you understand it all, and you're talking it all? I, I'm not.
I haven't read it.
No, I know, but just-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, seriously, nobody is. And nobody's talking about it. I had a meeting in Lynn-
What I wanna avoid is going to Town Hall, Town Meeting, standing up and getting asked a question and going, "Uh, that's a good question."
Well, so my, my only comment to that, my only response is that all we're doing is setting the location. That's it.
Yeah, correct.
The state, the Department of Public Health, et cetera, et cetera, is taking care of all of the regulations on what's taking place within the facility.
What can be sold.
What can be sold, when, where.
But what about the things like the site stuff, like the setbacks from properties? And that's us.
Right, and that's in here. It's not changed from the medical, from what I-
We need that intensity of use schedule.
So there's 300, 300-foot setbacks from-
Yeah, there has to be another amendment.
-libraries, playgrounds, public parks, youth centers, public swimming pools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has to be included, too. So that's another amendment that's going to be-
Yeah, that has to, yeah.
That's, that's an easier one.
Yeah, attach it to this.
That's pretty simple. That's just like doing the CB mixed juice.
Just adding a line.
I think, I think at the time, you know, as I'm thinking about downtown, the reason we weren't that concerned about downtown was because of that, I think you told me, 300 feet from a residence in this industrial area downtown by, uh, Molton Street, I think it is. That's a little section of industrial. It's, I think it's IA. I think we, we excluded it from all residences of the district.
You think of Carlton? Carlton Drive?
Yeah. No, right, no, right downtown. Um, where the insurance company is and-
Right, gotcha, gotcha, behind, yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so the residents are very close to that, and they would fall into that 300.
I, I just wanna point out, and how confusing this is. If you were paying attention to the news earlier this week, the transportation aspect of this and the cafe creation of this is off the table until the earliest this fall.
Yeah, that won't be coming out in the new regulations. That's gonna get killed.
Now, in this proposed ordinance, there's a lot of language in there having to do with transportation. Well, that, that's fine. I'm saying it's fine because eventually we're gonna have to incorporate that particular issue into the zoning. Might as well just have it. Now, my total opinion with this thing is, is that the state is finding out and has found out over the last year how, how complicated this is, and what a box they've put themselves in timeframe-wise. And nobody is ready to deal with this thing between today and, you know, May 7th, in, you know, a totally understanding way. I mean, it's unbelievable. Nobody's talking about it at the regional planning agencies. I went to an Economic Development meeting in, in Lynn City Hall yesterday morning, and nobody even talking about it. It's like, what the heck? This is an important issue that has to be decided on by all the municipalities in Massachusetts this spring. And nobody has a clue. I'm not being harsh. Nobody has a clue. Nobody's talking about it. Everybody's waiting for the Cannabis Commission to come out with their final-
Final regs.
-which is supposed to be in March 15th. So then we're gonna have a crash course, and for us, if we didn't move forward and progressive as we were at the last meeting, we would never have met the deadlines.
Of course not. You can see that.
I had to, today, I had to put everything aside, crunch this out, get it in front of you guys and say, "Hey, by the way, we're gonna have a public hearing on this. Big ordinance change, big addition to our zoning ordinance in our town complexion, March 28th."
Right. I think this is a great start. I think there, there's a risk, because this is really such a new idea. There's a risk in overcomplicating this. You know, I-
It's too much.
I like the, the, the way you think about this. This has to do with location. It doesn't have to do with dosage. It doesn't have to do with anything else. It's just really location.
Bars on the windows, locks on the doors. It has nothing to do with that. This is just-
They could've made it really simple. Guess what? Don't arrest people-
That's true. Why?
-don't arrest people that have X amount of water on them. You know, if they have X number, amount on them, then they can arrest it. But they've really complicated everything. It is, is it the seeking of money? Is, is that what it's all about? Hey, this is a way for we, for the state of Massachusetts to reek in millions of dollars. Of course we gotta regulate this thing. Of course we gotta make it as complicated as possible, you know, and, and destroy the whole intent of it. And the whole intent was not to put people behind bars for the use of marijuana, you know?
Well, a lot of problem, too, is that you, you can't create this law by ballot. It's, it's far too complex of an issue. But the State House never acted, so the ballot is where it came from. But at the end of the day, we're, our, our job here is, in my estimation, very, very small, to say, the only place that, this, once it's allowed, once the state allows it, it should only be allowed in the areas that we decide, and, I mean, we already have the overlay.
I only feel comfortable with it because I've spent so much time on it. And I feel very comfortable with what I've produced. And, and now it's in the hands of Town Council to amend further, advise further, and the guidelines specify that. Please advance with this old idea through the advice of council.
Absolutely.
You know? Don't do it on your own.
When you said we already had the overlay, wasn't there one area that was in question?
I think that's what John was talking about.
Yeah, it was the downtown area. It's just a small little pocket.
Okay.
And that's, that's specifically addressed and, and deleted from this. This overlay district is only going to pertain, in all likelihood, all likelihood, to one, possibly two facilities.
Okay.
And it's going to be out there, along the highway.
Why would we wanna limit it like that? Well, we could talk about that at the hearing.
Yeah, that's up to, I would say that's another year out before you can do anything like that.
I, I don't either, ultimately.
I, I see-
But do people have to get used to it, and have to-
I see a great amount of money that this town would be collecting from the personal property taxes of all the equipment of growing. I see the, naturally, the three and a half percent that we're allowed, if we choose, to take it. And I, I basically see, this is part of, you know, not economic development, but there are a number of businesses. This is going to happen. I think what you're looking at right now, this is the, the functional equivalent of prohibition being lifted, and where are, where are your distilleries? Where are your, where are your-
Risks.
Look at how silly it is, though. We're, you know, we're talking about cannabis, right? And this is what it's actually gonna be called. For the purposes of this bylaw, there is hereby established a not medically prescribed marijuana overlay district. I can't even pronounce that acronym, but that's what we're talking about.
NIMM.
So, yeah. So, so, so pot becomes a NIMM, whatever we're gonna be doing. But it's a regulation of the use and distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed.
John, I don't wanna get too much into the weeds on what you wrote here, but-
Oh.
Couldn't help myself.
Because it'll all go up in smoke.
On, on page five, visibility?
Such a fog.
Oh, wow.
Visibility, J, on page five.
I haven't had a chance to look at this yet.
Yeah. Which one is it, J?
J. Would that prohibit the use of, for example, a, a sign out front of the business? Or?
What, what is it, J? Did you say J?
Visibility.
How ironic.
Yeah.
I just wondered technically.
So, that seems a little-
Well, there's, there's not gonna be any treatment, anyway. There's a lot of tweaking.
Some of this came from the medical.
Yeah, it did. It did, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of tweaking.
Yeah.
Why didn't you just add it on to the medical, medical slash recreational?
You can't do it. No, this needs its own article.
The latest and greatest is now if it's the medical-
This is recreational marijuana for adult use. It, it, this is different. This is different. That other stuff you need, you need a medical card for.
Yeah.
It's called a green card.
And if they turn over and go to recreational, the, the state's talking about-
Green card.
-wiring them to have a certain amount for the separate facility, and, not separate facility, but separate entrances, and a certain amount of stock will be maintained-
Dedicated.
Dedicated for medical.
Yeah.
Because they're worried about-
The state would take over that. That there won't be any.
The state would dictate that.
Yeah. They would probably regulate, yeah. That would be regulated, sure, for sure.
It's gonna be interesting.
And I have just one more thing to hand out, and you can read it at your leisure. This is just a Economic Development Comments Report that I provided last week to Economic Development Committee. It summarizes what we're involved with. Just quickly, we've got a $50,000 technical assistance grant for mass development, and that's for the National Ave property. So we can use that $50,000 to come up with, you know, a future for that site, that specific site. We just got designated, the town, with that 100 acres on either side of 95 at the 54 exit, as a priority development area that supersedes the priority development site designation of yesteryear in the 43R designation preceding that. But this, this time, it's different because we're organized and we're aggressive, and we're gonna really make something out of that designation, along with the $50,000 grant. And there's also a description in there of what's going on with the access issue to the property the town now owns on National Ave. That's addressed in there.
John, how does that affect our expedited development bylaw?
It, that would help. The expedited development bylaw will help out with the future development of that whole area.
So it just applies on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, and then we just got a $50,000 grant for an economic development updating of the downtown area. I'm gonna send you out a letter that I just drafted, finished drafting. I'm in the process of finishing it tonight and sending it to the Board of Selectmen, but it's from the Economic Development Committee recommending how that $50,000 should be spent, and specifying that it should be put towards updating a master plan for the downtown area relative to addressing sewer, zoning, traffic, and parking. Those are the four elements we agreed to. Downtown can't go any further, can't do anything more, pretty much, than what already exists down there without sewerage, and we all know that. And whether it's sewerage or communal, allowed communal leaching capacity enhancement project down there, something to that effect, you know, you, you're just not going to have the sustainability, the growth potential, you know, the improvement to the vitality of that particular area, and what it means to the town of Georgetown. So I put this together in the form of a letter requested of me to do so by the Economic Development Committee. So that's all in the works. We, we have to contract and spend this money and have it designated for spending by the end of June of this year. So that's a real fast track.
Whoa.
I just wanted you guys to know, that's just not a matter of trying to, you know, deal with what we're dealing with here. There's a lot of, lot of economic development stuff going on.
June's a big month. That's what I-
Are you, are you feeling under control?
Yeah. Yeah. Spinning like a top.
I would say, that's a good report, though. I like getting your report, being writing like that.
And I'll, and I'll send you guys copies of this letter. I'm gonna finish drafting through here.
It's good. It's good to keep us-
And then I'm on a plane tomorrow morning, so.
Nice for you.
I gotta, that's how I stay in control. I get to escape once in a while.
Did you guys, um-
Speaking of escape.
Did you guys, did you guys get the lighting email?
Yep.
Did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
If you aren't, just gonna say, "Yep, I'm behind it," then we'll take it to the next meeting, 'cause I don't have any more.
We'll take it to the next meeting.
Let's take it.
Let's take it.
Motion two, adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Not motivated. John, I've got a whole bunch of-